All right, good morning and welcome to the April fifteenth, Tuesday, April fifteenth, Board of Supervisors meeting. We call this meeting to order in here at nine AM and we'll start off with a moment of silence. Does anybody have a moment of silence? Well, I don't have one either, so. But we will, we'll start with one thing. I know that Georgina is here, it's her birthday, so we'll wish her a happy birthday. We'll go that route. All right, so with that, we'll start with the pledge allegiance. And so Supervisor Sabate, can you lead us in place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Any items, extra items to consider that are not appearing on the agenda?
We have no extra items.
No extra items. Approval of the consent agenda, the consent agenda is approved in one motion and if they're non-controversial, so, but if there's somebody who wants to pull one, we can discuss it further at length and anybody from the board or from the public can pull this item. I know right now we have five point seven that will be pulled until April twenty second. And are there any others from the board as of right now?
I have seven.
Oh, okay, that's, that's, that will be at the, we'll take that up later, yeah. And so with that open to the public, if there's anyone that would like to pull an item from the agenda, consent agenda, that is.
Thank you. Good morning, board and staff. I'm here representing my position as the Secretary of the Upper Lake Community Services District Formation Commission.
State your name, please.
Julia Carrera. And we'd like to pull five point one zero. The board asked me, knowing that I'm here every Tuesday, to request that. We are finishing up the budget.
Okay, well, we can talk about that when we bring the item later, but you want to pull five point one zero?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other items to, anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right, anyone on Zoom? All right. Bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of five point seven and five point ten.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Let's see, we're at nine oh three, perfect. We'll move on to six point one, our public input. If anyone would like to come to the microphone and talk about a concern or would like to make a public comment about anything that's not considered on the agenda already, you can come up for three minutes and speak about that issue. Just know that the board is not at liberty to basically discuss the issue until a later date. But I do have one here from Nancy Rizika. I know you wanted to come up and, if you do come up and you haven't filled out a form, you can do so.
She has.
Yeah, no, and I have yours, so you're good.
Oh, okay. I have seven copies of what I'm going to tell you here, so you can follow along and see the attachment, including one for county council.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Rizika, I know most of you. I'm here as a member of the Westlake subdivision homeowners association board of directors. The issue I'm here for is an email we received this past Thursday, which is attached stating, it's from Alan Miller of special districts, stating special districts is not responsible to repair a one to two gallon per minute water leak on Lake Shore Boulevard in North Lakeport, which I called them about because I could see a lake in the right way opposite my home. He states it's probably in lines crossing Lake Shore Boulevard in the county right away, but it appears to have ceased and there are excavation areas covered with a large metal plate and four large orange cones. It is blocking the westerly bicycle lane partially and the school bus stop. The Westlake homeowners association should not be responsible, as Mr. Miller states, for repairing the water district's transmission lines, especially not in the county right way. We don't have the equipment. There have only been three water transmission line leaks in Westlake subdivision during the past forty years and one sewer line blockage that I can recall. It's a good system. Let me give you the history. Westlake Homes is a fifty-four lot, single-family home subdivision established as a senior community in the nineteen eighties. The Enrul Act came in and there were too many stairs in the development to continue to qualify, so we have both families, retirees and young professionals now. Is located between Parkway and Lake Shore Boulevard with lakefront access at the Marina Clubhouse on Lake Shore Boulevard to the south of Westlake's lots number one and two. I happen to live in lot number two, so I can see my second floor leak across the road. Since its inception, Westlake has been served by North Lakeport Sewer. Starland Development Company of Santa Rosa created Starview Mutual Water Company. Each lot purchased received one share of stock. Starland's partner was a Santa Rosa savings and loan that was shut down during the eighties savings and loan crisis and the FDIC ended up with Westlake, Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation, which insures banks. For about eight years, sales ceased out at Westlake, but some homes had been sold. The County of Lake decided to create a new North Lakeport district for water and needed the fifty-four hookups to make the district feasible and qualified for funding, which included an FHA loan.
Nancy, your three minutes are up, so if you can wrap up, please.
Yeah, I will. And they purchased the stock from each stockholder. Each time, each home has a water meter and they bill bi-monthly for water and sewer. The two wells had to be capped, we were forced to buy irrigation water. Okay, what I'm asking, please ask special districts to maintain their transmission lines to each meter. When you buy something, you maintain it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Are there any other folks that would like to provide public input at this time? Any on Zoom? All right. With that, so we will move on to our next item, which is the pet of the week.
Hi, my name is Whitney. I work for Lake County Animal Care and Control. Today we have with us Wheezy. She is at risk for euthanasia. She's approximately one years old, bull terrier mix. She's a very sweet girl. She's had a rough start at her life. She is super sweet and just wants to run, plays great off-leash with a high-energy neutered male. She hasn't been tested with females, but we can test her. Loves to play fetch and she loves most toys, loves her butt scratched and lots of cuddles. If you're interested in seeing her or applying for her, please come see us at four nine four nine Hellbush Drive in Lakeport. Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye. She's for having us.
You know, there was a public input in the, I didn't see it, it was in the ecomments. Can I read it? Do I have to go, what do I do, Lloyd?
Just as a housekeeping matter, you could reopen public input.
Okay. Do I need to have a vote or just reopen it?
You can do that by motion.
Okay, is there a?
I move that we reopen public input. A second?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And with that, I'll open public input once more. There was a comment by Bobby Dutcher and it states, "The county's road department did an excellent job last week repairing potholes on Elk Mountain Road. There was an ORV event on Elk Mountain this weekend and hundreds of people went up and down the mountain, so the timing for the repair was perfect. I realize the department has very limited resources for this type of work, so the attention given to the road was greatly appreciated by everyone, both tourists and landowners." So I just wanted to read that as I seen it in there.
Yeah.
All right. With that, I'll go back to the agenda and move on to six point three, National Poetry Month, poem of the week.
Good morning. Should we come up here?
Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it better if we come up? Okay?
Either or.
So we don't have to go back there.
Good morning, I am Brenda Marie Jaeger. I am the poet laureate of Lake County and thank you so much to the Board of Supervisors for proclaiming Poetry Month in April this month and for celebrating every week with us by having us here to read a poem of the month. I wanted to announce that Poetry Month celebration is continuing all month and this Saturday we will have one of our major events, which is local Lake County poets reading their own work. It's a reading called "The Shared World" at the Lakeport Library here in Lakeport and there will be a robust open mic after the event, so everyone, I know you all have a poem in you, please come and read your own poetry as well. And I, today we have a very special honor and guest to read the poem of the week, Georgina Marie Guardado, who is our former poet laureate, and it is her birthday today, so I invited her here today to do her favorite thing, which is to read poetry. Thank you, Georgina.
Good morning, everyone. What time is the reading on Saturday, by the way?
Oh, the reading on Saturday is at two o'clock at the library and it's free. Please come join us.
Thanks. And please consider adopting Wheezy, that poor girl is at risk for euthanasia. Thank you to the board for having me. So I'm going to read two poems today, actually. One of them is a library poem. Libraries are being targeted across the US right now and it's a good time to support your local library. Not only is it a place to borrow books, but it's also a place for community resources. So this poem is by Alberto Rios. Just a little backstory, born in nineteen fifty-two, Alberto Rios is the inaugural state poet laureate of Arizona and the author of many poetry collections. He's received the Walt Whitman Award and he served as chancellor of the Academy of American Poets from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty. "Don't Go Into the Library" by Alberto Rios. "The library is dangerous. Don't go in. If you do, you know what will happen. It's like a pet store or a bakery. Every single time you'll come out of there holding something in your arms. Those novels with their big eyes and those no-nonsense, all muscle, greyhounds and Dobermans, all nonfiction and business, cuddly when they're young, but then the first page is turned. The donut scent of it all, knowledge, the aroma of coffee being made. In all those books, something for everyone. The deli offerings of civilization itself. The library is the book of books. Its concrete and wood and glass covers, keeping within them the very big, very long story of everything. The library is dangerous, full of answers. If you go inside, you may not come out the same person who went in." And the second poem is by a local poet. Both of these poets are Chicano poets, by the way. Vicente Zeta Colosseum is a Lake County poet. He was born on June twelfth, nineteen ninety-two, and he was murdered on January thirty-first this year at Library Park in Lakeport. In honor of National Poetry Month, his poems are on display in poetry boxes around the county for the month of April, and this was a request from the Board of Supervisors to read one of his poems. And I thought I'd choose one of his mom's favorite poems. "For Sam Haley" by Vicente Zeta Colosseum. "This poem needs to be saved from itself. It is way over the hill. Words on dead wood long ago, it ceased to be profitable. You would be keeping it from being taken by its own dark and useless purposes. There are words in here over a thousand years old. They have conspired with other creatures and have been spoken with air that has been inside the leaves of trees. These words, when spoken, are an ancient forest. Some of the words, they say, are no longer productive. Truth, love, compassion for all things. Hey, call the operators. Haul them away to the mill, but say, isn't that a trace of wisdom? In among those words and down there, isn't that a vol? Begging for buried meaning. In the decay and death of a culture that long ago knew how to say enough, don't be taking what you haven't created and can't pay back. There is blood here and owl is eating the vol. There is life here. These words are inside the trees again. These words are inside the trees again. What happens to the forest happens to us. We should be cutting lies instead of truths." Thank you.
Is there anyone that would like to comment on that public input on Zoom? All right, well, thank you for reading that, those were really good poems, thanks again.
Happy birthday.
Yes, happy birthday. All right. Next on our agenda is item six point four, presentation of proclamation designating April thirteenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, as National Public Safety Dispatchers Week in Lake County, and Vice Chair Rasmussen will be reading this proclamation.
Well, anyone here for dispatcher week is welcome to come up. Thank you, Sheriff.
How about everybody is welcome to. They're not taking that lead.
Well, I'm proud to be able to read this proclamation since in my previous career for thirty-five years, dispatchers here in Lake County looked after me and they really are the unseen heroes of law enforcement. Law enforcement would not be able to do their job safely or respond to public concerns without them, so they're very important. And with that, I'll read the proclamation. Proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, the County of Lake, designating the week of April thirteenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, as National Public Safety Dispatchers Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require law enforcement, fire or emergency services, and whereas when emergencies occur, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters and emergency medical professionals is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our law enforcement officers and fire personnel is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact the Lake County Central Dispatch Center. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and can be the most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services and provide the vital link for our law enforcement officers and fire personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, direction and ensuring their safety. And whereas the public safety dispatchers of the Lake County Sheriff's Office have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires and treatment of patients by exhibiting compassion, understanding, profession and professionalism during the performance of their job. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the week of April thirteenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, as National Public Safety Dispatchers Week in Lake County and encourages all citizens to join in recognizing the commitment of our public safety dispatchers who dedicate their lives to serving the public to preserve the safety of our community. Passed and adopted this fifteenth day of April, twenty twenty-five, and signed by the Chair of the Board, E.J. Crandall. Thank you.
Brad summed it up very well and on behalf of all of our public safety dispatchers in Lake County, it's my honor to accept this proclamation on their behalf. I always say that, you know, they're kind of the unsung heroes of law enforcement, they're the ones that have all the communication, everything goes through them for the protection of the citizens and my deputies and the peace officers in Lake County. They're that key component that puts all of that information together, keeps our citizens safe and keeps all, keeps all of us safe. And we recognize them this week, but in, in law enforcement and in the sheriff's office, we thank them all the time for the work that they do and the efforts they put out for not only the department, but our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments from the board?
Do we want to get a?
Comments first.
I just, my comment is, I think what we talk about often, but don't really relate it to dispatchers, is victim advocacy and they are the first point of contact for victims. They have to deal with the emotions, they have to deal with understanding the trauma and while they may not be out there in harrowing situations that our law enforcement may get into, the mental strain that can occur from dispatchers dealing with victims that are dealing with very bad situations, I think is something that we need to talk about and remember. And when we talk about victims advocates, typically we talk about the victim advocates groups and our departments that take care of those things after the fact, but this is the starting point, this is where it all begins and that, that connection is important. And so thank you for all the work that they do.
And I just want to say thank you as well. You're much appreciated. What's the vacancy rate of our dispatchers now?
We are down one supervisor and two dispatchers.
Oh, gosh.
So deputies are doing?
Deputies are back on doing dispatch?
Right now.
Okay. It is a really hard job, long hours away from family. It takes dedicated individuals to do that work, so thank you so much for bringing this.
All right. Anyone from the public have a comment?
Hello, I'm Elise Jones, Director of Lake County Behavioral Health Services. I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of these gentlemen quite extensively, especially over the past year, year and a half, as we've really integrated our services and it's, it's been a great experience. And I know because I hear about it from other counties that that's not often the case and so I'm really grateful for the leadership and just working better together. I'm looking forward to the future.
Is there anyone on Zoom? All right, I'll close that so we can take the picture. All right, Sam.
Let's do one more, go ahead. No, it's my turn. One, two, three. Great, thanks so much.
It's not allowed to read.
This will be your job.
Need to get me one of those.
It's money day.
It's not a good day.
All right. All right, next is our six point five, nine ten, consideration of presentation by Dr. Christopher Chin, the UCCE Integrated Vineyard Systems Advisor, UC Extension. And you can come on up and sit at the, the dais here. And the area director, Matthew Barnes, you have the floor.
Yeah, good morning, board.
Yeah, good morning, Board, Chair Crandall, Matthew Barnes, Area Director, UC Cooperative Extension. It's my pleasure to introduce today Chris Chin, Ph.D., our Integrated Vineyard Systems Advisor for Lake Mendocino and Sonoma Counties. Chris's innovative research addresses critical issues facing our region's vineyards, including climate resilience, drought adaptation, smoke taint mitigation, and sustainable vineyard practices. His work provides essential support to local growers protecting and enhancing the wine grape industry, the lifeblood of our local agriculture economy. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, guys, for having me. Appreciate it. Yeah, I'm Christopher Chin. I work for University of California Cooperative Extension, and I've been doing this since 2022 till now. I have my education from UC Davis. I got a master's and a Ph.D. in horticulture and agronomy, and I focus on viticulture. And I actually replaced two people in this role, Rhonda Smith in Sonoma County and Glenn McGordy, who covered Lake County for decades before me. So I cover three counties, Sonoma, Mendocino, and Lake Counties. My main office is actually at the Hopland Research and Extension Center, which is a little over fifty-three hundred acres dedicated to research, outreach, education. It's a very valuable resource and one that very few locations and counties have, which is fantastic for my work. It's great to be able to teach people there, to show how we do viticulture research. We have a small research vineyard. It's a fantastic place to work and a fantastic resource for what I have to do in my job, which is, I think, very important right now. In the past couple of years statewide, we've lost over fifty thousand acres of wine grapes, not to mention table and raisin grapes, which I don't have the numbers on. But wine grapes are being ripped out pretty regularly, and that's because prices and demand are down. This is pretty problematic considering the, you know, wine and grape industry is a very large part of what we do in Northern California. So what we do is we try to help our stakeholders. We try to help the farmers who grow grapes in this area with one-on-one assistance, in-person visits, and making resources accessible online at no charge to them. All of these are at no charge to them. So we're a partner with them in dealing with the economic challenges we have and we're facing in the grape industry right now. That brings me to my specific program objectives. I like to look at it like a Venn diagram of how do we make sure agriculture is sustainable in our region? It is a huge part of the economy, so we want to make sure it is sound for people to actually go into agriculture. And that's three parts, I think, economic viability, social responsibility, and environmentally sound practices. And that kind of makes up sustainable agriculture. So what we do to achieve that, we offer really relevant programs, relevant to the time, relevant to matters that people are worried about, pursuing practical information, things that people can use quickly, not wait twenty years for someone to develop something functional on, which leads us to applied topics. Again, same concept, trying to figure out what we can do now. And then we provide advice and resources to clients when possible or when they ask, right? And these are the services that all of Cooperative Extension provides, but focused on viticulture, right? So we do extension, we do outreach. Extension is sharing information. Outreach is figuring out what our clients need. We educate. This includes students, but we also educate our stakeholders, farmers, folks that need to know certain things to improve their practices in farming. We do consultations. I do it, we all do it at no cost to them. They give us a call, we schedule it two weeks out, and we head out there. It's, I've only found that people are very grateful that we're able to do that. We provide references and resources, so this is publicly accessible material. We might be able to share material with them that would otherwise be difficult for them to find. And then we do also engage in research. Typically, it's new ideas or concepts that will immediately or directly benefit our clientele. We host educational events. That's a huge part of what I do. We do multiple events a year. There are repeating events. There are events that we do every year because they are popular, because they're well-received. The Olive or Pear and Grape Day, that's an annual event we do. We host it and invite folks from both Lake and Mendocino County, and we switch off which county we host it in each year. I do that with my colleague, Klebsen Gonzalez, who is our diversified ag extension advisor. We do other things, too. Pest Control Advisor breakfasts are very, very popular. I mean, it's hard to argue with a free breakfast and continuing education hours that can be difficult to get. We don't charge for those. I do that in conjunction with our IPM advisor. And then we have other events. On the Road is an event UC Davis holds once in a while, that every couple of years they come up here, and we invite professors to tell our stakeholders what the new research is. It may not be directly applicable to them now, but it is something that would be important later on when new things show up, new techniques, new materials. And then one of the most popular are tailgates and field days. Those are very fun. I enjoy those a lot. Get out in the field and really show people how to do the things we're talking about, hands-on. I also engage in research. About twenty to thirty percent of all of our time, any advisor is dedicated to research. I focus on figuring out how to deal with environmental challenges in vineyards. We get sunburn, we get frost events. Lake County got a pretty rough frost event a couple of years ago. That was something that was brought to my attention, so I do work on that as well, looking at berry shrivel, avoiding sunburn, using light modification technologies. Rootstocks for drought recovery was a big one I worked on. Originally, it was for drought tolerance, but it started raining, so it was drought recovery after that. But what plants can we use to better grow our grapes? And then the big one, the newest one, is smoke risk during prescribed burns. That is in the development stage right now, preliminary stages, but it's an infield assessment of how does prescribed burns actually affect our grapes? Not based on a smoke tunnel, not based on somebody burning wood chips and then blowing the smoke on the grapes, but how does a prescribed burn that keeps us safe from wildfires actually affect the smoke taint that we see in wine grapes? And that one was actually, is being conducted at the Hopland Research Center. Just a couple more, and I'll finish up. So replacing frost irrigation with fans, this is a Lake County one. This is something I'm doing in conjunction with my stakeholders to look at where we can use less water for frost protection. Where can we utilize temperature inversions to turn on frost fans or install frost fans to limit frost risk in vineyards without using twenty to thirty percent of the water that we would in a normal growing year for irrigation over two weeks for frost irrigation? This is a water conservation goal and identifying places where we can replace water use with, you know, propane-powered or electric-powered fans. Fantastic, I think, and will be very useful for the folks that are able to do this in their regions. And then the smoke one, this focuses on the volatile phenols specifically and measuring, you know, what kind of fuel source actually releases the most compounds that are damaging to grapes? We know that trees, we know that anything with hardwood really is pretty detrimental to growing grapes when they burn. But do grasses, are grasses that much of an issue as well? Because they release a lot less of these compounds, and we don't know that, right? We don't know if these phenols actually degrade as they get further away from the source of the smoke. Or maybe they stick in the air, or maybe it matters of what the fuel source is, right? The study we did here is a preliminary study two years ago. We did see an average of a thirty-one percent decrease in these compounds at less than a quarter mile from the source of the smoke. So there is a chance that it's not a huge risk, and we can focus on burning for fire safety without too much concern for the grapes. We should still be concerned for them. And, you know, in spirit with Pet of the Week, these are my dogs, and this blue on the right, Milo on the left, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, Dr. Chan, thank you for coming, and thanks for arranging this, Matt. At our ag advisory meeting, we heard from the Wine Grape Commission that in the last eighteen months, ten percent of the wine grapes in Lake County have been reduced. Are you tracking that? Does that line up with your data?
Yeah, that's, I don't track that personally, but I do keep in line with, you know, what's being published in different magazines and articles. Lake County is actually at the lower end of that for a lot of places. It's Fresno, Bakersfield, they're removing thirty to forty percent of their grapes, but they're on larger scales, right? We have smaller-scale farms here. They're still pretty big, but they're not ten-acre farms, and they're not a thousand-acre farms. So I would guess, yes, that's about right. I can't say for sure, but yeah, it's happening all across the entire state.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Supervisor Owen?
Okay. Your frost protection with the fans, is, are there fans available that are not as loud? That's been a complaint with people living near the fan, you know, frost protection for the grapes.
That's a great question. No, not, there aren't fans that are manufactured to be more quiet. As far as I know, there are some that are more quiet, right? A diesel fan versus a propane-powered fan is going to be a little different in decibel output. The real trick, I think, is placement of where you're putting it in the vineyard. That affects how useful it is in preventing frost, but also where the sound waves are going. If they're at the edge of a hillside, that's going to be different than the middle of a valley, and I know that's a big concern with these fans.
Yeah, yeah, I've had some complaints about that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was just about you?
Just more of a comment. I appreciate the work that you're doing in trying to find more drought-resistant, more climate-resistant type of plants that continue the economy that we have here. The future may not be grapes, but at this moment, it is a major part of our economy. But just figuring out what works and what doesn't work, because it is ever-changing, and I think that the fact that that's happening is a good thing. I know when I went to go visit one of the Beckstoffer areas, I think they have an acre for studies on different types to make sure the sugars remain the same, the quality of the taste remains the same with less water, more sun, things like that. And I just think that's awesome that it's happening here in Lake County, and I think it's something that we absolutely should be doing in order to ensure that there's a future in the economy of agriculture here in Lake County. So appreciate the fact that you are also involved with that.
Thank you. Yeah, I completely agree with you, and actually, that acre or two of research at the Beckstoffer Vineyard is where we're doing our berry shrivel study. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you for the presentation. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this presentation? All right. Come on up and state your name for the record.
Margot Cambara. Thank you for your research. We need science. I have a stupid question. So maybe it's too late. Do we need to take a page from George Washington Carver and say, what else can we do with our wine grapes? Do you research and say, can we use it for something else other than grape? I don't know. And could you share some thoughts on that line of reasoning? Or are we just committed, this is the only use? Wine grapes for wine. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for the question. I would say there are different uses for wine grapes, right? We could make vinegars with them. We could bottle them as non-alcoholic beverages. That is a common use. It's not an economical approach in most cases, though. Wine grapes are pretty expensive to manage, somewhere between five and ten thousand an acre. And if you're not getting that back in your grape prices, and specifically for wine, where the price tends to be high, historically has been high, it's not worth the management costs. So we could change the way we manage things to be less costly, but it will not come out as the same high-quality wine that Lake County is known for. But if we're making other products, it might be a way to approach that, definitely.
I heard that idea is grape butter. That's what I'm thinking you were offering.
Grape butter. You know, if you toast the seeds of grapes, they smell like kettle corn, so people make bread out of them. Yeah, that's a strange one. I know.
Is there anyone on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back, close public input, bring back the board. Go ahead, Supervisor.
I have a question. So the, I'm sure that there are a number of other crops, up-and-coming crops, perhaps, that you, do you guys look at what, you know, the soils are good for producing that it would be advantageous to the county in other areas with other crops to replace that?
Yeah, so in my position, I really focus on grapes, so I try not to directly say this is the next crop, right? But if somebody asks me, yes, we talk about that, and there are a lot of considerations to be made and a lot of options in crops. But what's pointed out to me by my clientele has been that in every past cycle of switching to a new crop, it was obvious that we wanted to go to that crop, right? That's not the case right now. So there are talks about high-density olives for olive oil. You could reuse machinery that we have currently for wine grapes for that. But again, does it pencil out to actually a profit? We don't know. There's talks about agave for tequila production. Again, that's an eight-year commitment before you get to the first bottle, so I don't know how well that's going to go over. But people are talking about it, and my colleague, Klebsen Gonzalez, who is our diversified ag advisor, is the one really looking at other options right now. This is the same through all of the counties I work in as well. So it's Mendocino County, Lake County, and Sonoma County are all looking, what can we plant in vineyard land? Because grapes don't actually need a lot of good soil. They, we need something that can tolerate pretty poor conditions to replace them. Not in all cases, right? A big valley has great soil, but if you're up in red hills, you do have to consider what can deal with, you know, volcanic soil that drains quickly and dries fast. These questions have to be asked, and it may be the case that we will find something that replaces it that's more profitable, that can keep agriculture industry pretty well propped up for a long time. But for now, there's nothing directly visible or something to point out.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
All right, well, thank you again for the presentation and giving us this insight, and we'll take this, you know, this presentation, and we'll look towards whatever it is in the future we have to, you know, move forward with on this, keep an eye on it, and you're doing a great job. I remember meeting you at the Ag Venture class. That's where I think you just started around that time?
I did, yeah, it was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I remember you were like, because Glenn was the supervisor over in Mendocino County, so I was like, I didn't know he did. I really didn't know that he did that before he was a supervisor, so. But anyhow, thank you again, Director Barnes and, you know, and Chris, Dr. Chin, sorry. All right, with that, we'll close this presentation, and we'll move on to another agenda item here.
Thank you all.
Would anyone like to take a break? Or we can move on? You have a recommendation?
I do, Chair. Excuse me, five ten?
Oh, okay. We'll move on to five point one zero, Sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District Board of Directors, Adopt Resolution Authorizing Lake County Watershed Protection District Director to Amend the Flood System Repair Project, twenty twenty-four Levy Patrol Road Gravel Repair Project Agreement to Increase Funding for the Project. This was pulled by a citizen. Julia, did you want to come up and accentuate? You were going on to it, but I wanted to make sure that we got through that portion and give you the opportunity to explain why you pulled it.
Thank you. So the Upper Lake Community Services District Formation Committee wanted to pull this because we're in the midst of finalizing the LAFCO budget for application for a new community services district, and this affects our draft budget. So we'd like to understand why there's an additional hundred thousand, where that money's coming from, and from the state. Is it associated in any way with the repairs to the scouring area on Middle Creek diversion? Prefer that any money spent goes on that since it's continually deteriorating and scaring the community of Upper Lake. But we do need to know what's happening and understand, because it does affect our draft budget. Thank you.
Quick question. How many people are on your formation committee?
Four.
Four, okay. And were you at the February Worth meeting? I think you were.
I am the Chair of the Levy Committee for Worth.
Right, and so there was an explanation as to the Caltrans mitigation project that's explaining how it's going to, they're going to be working on the area you're talking about. So either way, I know Water Resources is here, so I'll let them go ahead and answer some of your questions. I'm just reminding you, because I remember that meeting, and there was a lot of discussion about it, so I just wanted to clarify those.
Thank you. This is about the budget. Thank you.
Right, well, it's about the levies. You mentioned that, and
Yeah, we're
Four people are concerned and are on this committee out of twelve hundred people in Upper Lake, and you have Water Resources here that's going to answer your questions. So let's let them answer the questions, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Who's the questions?
They're right here, so.
So this is the FSRP project, which is repair for the Levy Patrol Road. So this So this has nothing to do with what was mentioned here before. What was mentioned here, because this is like a totally separate project. This funding comes from the state. It can be used for only that specific things. We can't just use it for any other thing because that's a dedicated fund which has been proposed. And right now, the situation is because we have already made that fix, like the repairing of the road itself. But the our costs end up being like 10% more due to like some of the unforeseen situation. So we requested from the state to increase our budget. And that's what this resolution is about, saying the county is okay with accepting that additional funds. So that work has already been done. The expenses has been made. It is just like we are receiving those to cover our cost. It doesn't make any money available for any other things if we don't approve this.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, just a quick question. Approximately, how much is that 10% increase?
So this is maybe around 20 to 25,000.
Thank you.
Yes.
And so this is basically closing out the project that was worked on, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything else? Did you want to add, Linda?
Not at this time. It's just being reimbursed. We went over budget and so DWR is saying, hey, we're going to try to get you some more money. And so that they needed an updated resolution to account for those things.
Thank you. And I know that I know that in some of the presentations and discussions at Worth, I know that Water Resources is very eager to have DWR there to help basically kind of reference what you're saying. Because a lot of times, for some reason, the county can mention this and it's not taken at face value. So I appreciate maybe next time, if we can coordinate with them to be here so we can, you know, this could help. Because I I see what you're doing and I've been a part of some of these discussions. So.
Yep, we've been in conversation with Marvigan and he's going to try to make it to the 15th. We're trying to see if our schedules, because right now is levy inspection. He does them all for California.
Thank you.
We'll get him there.
Yeah. So let me briefly address that thing. I think because that scour thing has been coming up like a time and again. But we do have a plan to address that, like we have a project in line, which is hopefully like in near future, we will implement that. And probably that should address the type of some part of the concern which has been raised here. But because we don't have like a dedicated fund like which we can use for anything at any moment of notice. So that's why we have to plan for things like any scar or something, but it will be addressed.
All right, thank you. Public input. So if you wanted to come back up and give your public input to this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So what I got from that is that the Department of Water Resources at the state level is where the money's coming from.
So if you can just continue on with your
And and that this was the work done on the road. But what I don't understand is what was the unseen reason for the increase? I know it's only 25,000, but again, with the LAFCO budget, we need to adjust it. So we'd like to understand. Thank you.
And so I don't know why the LAFCO budget has anything to do with this, but I'll go ahead.
Yeah. So actually, I think we did like initially, we planned for like about a mile, say, for an example, about a mile. So we did like mile and another 200 feet or 500 feet of thing. So that's what adds up our cost. Yeah.
All right. All right. Are there any other comments or questions from anybody? Anyone on Zoom? All right, I'll close public input and we'll look for action if anyone is willing to.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I move to I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Okay, we're directors. Director Owen?
Hi.
Director Sabatier?
Hi.
Director Rasmussen?
Hi.
Director Pisca?
Yes.
And Director Crandall?
Hi. With that, resolution is passed 500. And just a quick reference, thank you Director Podgy. One of the things I think we might want to be prepared for is when we have our budgets this June to have that actual zone, you know, in depth, so we can explain that budget. Because that's the budget that we're really talking about and not any other budget that's outside of the scope of the county. So thanks again, and we'll move on to the next agenda item. Would you have a recommendation?
Yes, I do, Chair. 7.2.
7.2. So we'll move on to that. Consideration of the use of staff time in excess of eight hours to research, a request received from the Office of Congressman Mike Thompson. And this is brought forward by Supervisor Owen, but I know that you also wanted to.
Yeah, at this time, I don't feel that I need extra time. I've got some research I want to do myself before I figure out where I'm going to go with this. So I've been this has to do with the Coast Guard Station outside of Middletown, north of Middletown. And I would like to hold off on asking for hours before until I know if I need them.
Did you have a date that you wanted to pull it until?
No, I I'm doing some research right now and then I'll bring it back when it's necessary.
Okay. Is there anything to add?
Public comment.
Lloyd?
Yes, Dave.
Is there anything to add or anything like that? Or just we just move on to public comment?
Correct.
All right. So I'll open it up for the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this? It looks like this is going to be pulled until a later date. Supervisor Owen would like to research further on this this item.
I just have one question.
Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
And I know that I I may have the chance to see the documents received from Congressman Thompson. Is there a timeline on there of when we're supposed to provide a response?
I didn't see a timeline on it. And did we, when you put this on the agenda, did you include the letters?
No, we did not.
Okay. Is that something you'd be willing to do to share with the rest of the board? Or? Yes, thank you. Okay, both letters. Yep, thank you.
Yeah. So I just I know you mentioned you wanted to do more research on your own. I know that this was brought to ask for staff time for research. So I is in you're the sponsor on
Well, actually, I was the staff had recommended that this be put on the agenda. I wasn't really sure if I was ready for it yet. So they had put it on. This came up on, was it Wednesday or Thursday last week?
Yes.
And so I spoke with them about it, but I have a lot of questions
Okay.
About it. And I'm I'm doing some of my own research right now.
Okay.
And then I have one major question. And I'm trying to find out where I would go to find out if there's any contaminants on the property, etc. So.
Well, it's your item. So, yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
So what we'll do is pull to a later date to be determined. Is that? All right. So I didn't close close public input, but I'll close it now since no one's come up and we'll go ahead and move this to a later date to be determined. All right, recommendations.
7.3.
7.3. Consideration of Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between County of Lake and Davis Guest Home Incorporated for Adult Residential Support Services and Special Mental Health Services for fiscal year 2024-25 in the amount of $330,000. We have Director Jones here from the Behavioral Health Department.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board. Thank you. In short, the reason for the increase to this contract is due to increased conservatorship placements. Historically, we've had about four individuals at this placement who've been there long term. And now we seem to have collected another two to three. We are presently working really hard to identify strategies to bring individuals back home. That remains a number one priority. And so that's what I have about this contract.
Any questions from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
Just a brief question, and thank you for the response to my email. I don't remember seeing, and I apologize, I'm going from what's in my head. I don't remember seeing specific costs per day in there. You mentioned that there was an increase. We're not going past that that cost that was in our contract at this moment in time. Because I don't I sorry, that was meant to be a question. That sounded like a comment. Are we are we seeing the cost go above what was approved in the original contract? Because I'm not believing that there is a increase in the per day on this amendment. It's just a total not to exceed.
Correct. So year to year, Davis Guest Home increases their rates. These last couple of years, the rate increases have been a little bit larger than normal due to the economic conditions. And because of the overall rate increases initiated at the fiscal year, as well as the increased utilization, you see a blooming costs, unfortunately. But like I said, across the board, we are really exploring ways to bring folks home, not just for economic reasons, but this is their home. So that's however, we are grateful, I want to say, for them accepting a lot of individuals who have had a hard time finding placements elsewhere.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? If not, I'll open it up to the public. Not seeing any, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between the County of Lake and Davis Guest House, Inc. for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services for fiscal year 2024-25 in the amount of $330,000 and authorize the Chair to sign.
A second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 500. Thank you very much. We will go ahead and take our break now. Five minutes. We'll be back here at 10:01.
No, well, yes.
No, well, yes. No, well, yes.
Contractors that are, you know, good small business owners to some of the largest job sites in the county. The picture behind this list is of BLH's. I think they have between 60 and 70 unit apartment complex in Kelseyville that they're currently building. But here's a list of our builders that we have connected with, anywhere from Bridges Construction, Baron Construction, Dan Co., TNT Construction. These partners are actually critical to gaining that exposure to some of the best job sites and best experience in Lake County for our workers. Just highlight a few. So Bridges Construction, I mean, look at this, they get to work shoulder to shoulder with some of the best carpenters in the county. Getting hands-on, real-world experience. Palace and Place over in Nice, so it's 40 units, I'm sure you are very familiar with that. Thank you again for bringing this to Lake County. It was a thrill to work with the main contractor, Pacific Builders. The experience for our three cohorts that were able to work on this site was amazing. It led to two jobs as well as connection to all the other subcontractors and experience of working at a large job site. And just to tie a bow in it, I know there's a few people in the room that's in this photo, but just to be a part of that bookend of cutting the ribbon and just looking around and it really sank in, it was like, man, the work that our builders got to help with this place, like, how many years is this going to be here, housing families? 50, 50-plus years? And they got a hand in it. And often, they also apply for this housing. I know at the Dan Co. worksite in Clear Lake, we had two of our builders that got jobs, but also two that are living there currently. But we do take on projects directly as a crew out in the community, and we have worked on 43 projects, six of which are transitional housing, 31 are rental, and eight are owner-occupied. Our main goal is to help homes become habitable and accessible. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our project coordinator, our crew coach, Mike Willis, and he'll give you a snapshot of what some of these projects look like.
Good morning. Good morning. Sorry for being a little late, had some mechanical problems. It's always wonderful to just come here to just give our presentation, to just say thanks to all of you for supporting the build program. This picture here, we got a referral, I got it all written down on paper, but I think I could tell about it. This was a referral in Kelseyville. Elderly woman called, and she was in need of help. She had air coming through her door. Her floor was sagging a little bit, and she didn't know what to do. She had mold in her washroom, her bathroom. And when Derek and I got there, we thought eventually, originally, we could just put some weather stripping around the door. Simple problem. Well, it turned out not to be that. She had a cracked frame. So we told her that we would fix the door, replace it, and which we did. I told her to call her insurance company about the mildew, because the mildew and mold, we really is not capable of doing that. So I called Bridges, Bridges came out. She said her insurance company was not going to pay for it. I stayed on her. I went there two, three times and constantly told her, call your insurance company, call your insurance company, they'll fix it. Bridges came out, look and behold, her insurance paid to get the mold done in the bathroom, her washroom. They put her new floor in, in the washroom, kitchen, and her other bathroom. It's those type of connections and stuff that I really enjoy. This is the door on the first photo, we didn't know was rot up under the door, so we had to replace the rot up under the door before we could even be able to put the new door in. That was a good job there. She also sent us a letter. My eyesight is not that good, but maybe you guys could read it.
Go ahead and read it.
Yeah, read it.
Okay, it says, from Deborah, it says, "Dear Mike and crew, thank you for purchasing and installing a new front door in my mobile home. You guys went above and beyond. I appreciate all that you have done for me, as I don't have the money for things like that. Sincerely, Deborah."
It's little letters and those appreciation words that motivates Derek and myself and Justin to do as much as we can for each and every one who call. This particular job was in Kelseyville. This was another referral. We get so many referral jobs, we have jobs, but referrals keeps coming in, it's hard to keep up with all the jobs. This job was in Kelseyville. We got there to the house, and the shower, that's the floor up under the shower. The shower itself was broken because the floor started sinking. So it was all cracked, the water was going through there into the flooring. So the floor had to be replaced. We had to put a new bathtub in, new inserts all the way around, had to put the door in. This particular job was even more special than the other one. Than the other one. Elderly lady. Her daughter had moved back with her mom to take care of her. Her daughter had stage three cancer. She was going to treatments. Her mom and I, we talked a lot while the work was being done. She expressed to me that she didn't have the money or funds to have this work done. She told me that she had prayed in hope that someone would come and be able to help her solve her situation. I'm glad that Build Program was able to be there to help her. This is, this is her speaking.
Calling a brand-new shower, which we have today, been waiting for a long time for something like this. I'm totally grateful. I couldn't be more grateful than to have something so beautiful and new as this is. And eventually, things are going to get better in my home. I thank the Lord for that.
All right, thank you. Once again, I just started to get their testimonies. It's one thing for the homeowners to tell me and the Build Crew how much they appreciate the work, but it means a lot more when we could share it with you here, when we give a presentation or even if we show it to our crew. We have probably two or three more testimonials on videos just like this. And once again, we just say thank you for supporting us. Okay, now we're going to talk about this graduate here. I can't tell you his name, but he works for Right On Time AC. When he came to the program, he was undecided about coming to the Build Program or going to work for Coca-Cola. He started sagging, coming to work. Then he finally made his mind up that he was gonna stick with the Build Program. He wanted to make it work. During the course of the three-month period, he encountered a situation on a job where Clear Lake is a small community, people know people, and people gossip and talk. He came to me and told me that he wasn't going back to that job, and that was it. And I had a real coaching moment with him. And to put it simple, I just told him, don't let no one stop you from achieving your goals, regardless of what they say to you. If there's not physically harming you and stuff, you go back to that job site. Don't worry about what they're saying. You stay there and you work. You're working for your future, you're working for your family. To make a long story short, he went back. He came back, I think Derek was in the office when he came back, and he thanked me. He graduated. He got a job at Right On Time. At Right On Time, I think the first week, he pulled up in front of the office, and this is a picture of us with his Right On Time truck, and he's been working there ever since. He just had another baby, good success story. But I could go on and on. We got people graduated, they are firefighters, some work for Jonas, two have been employed by Right On Time, I'm, excuse me, by Valley Glass, and the list just goes on and on. We had one young man yesterday come into the office, he graduated two crews ago. He wasn't that spectacular or anything, but the last week and a half of the course, he started rising to the top. He didn't get a job, no, he did get a job when he graduated, it only lasted two weeks, but he stuck to what we were teaching him about life and how he has to keep on pressing forward and going on. He came in the office yesterday, he'd been working for Amazon for about a year and a half now. He told us also that he's taking a course to be a lineman. And he just thanked Derek and I for just being there for him, and we made a big change in his life. If we could just do that with each and every one of our young men and women, then the Build Program is a success. I could keep on going because I got, I got some more stuff for you.
That helps.
But, but I know we have a limited, limited time. Oh, it's just one more thing, if I could just say, with all, with all these young men and women graduating, I sat down one day at my desk, and I did the math on how much money a month these young men and women bring right back to Lakeport. And that's what this program is all about, building up these young men and women and having them to live right here in Lakeport, putting money right back in the community and sharing their stories about the Build Program with other people. That's it.
Oh, thank you for that. Yeah, thanks, Mike. So just a couple more slides here. So in addition to the housing that we work on, we work on community enrichment projects where we can. Our priority is the housing, but where we can, we like to do projects like this, this gazebo over in Clear Lake in collaboration with Barbara Kreiswitz and her merry band of volunteers. Our Build Crew was able to make repairs and then painted the structure as well. Okay, yeah. Yep, that's a good one, Sam, thank you. Yeah, so that is the summary and a window into our construction fundamentals track of our Build Program. So for folks that are interested in applying, they can go to our website, ncoinc.org/built. They could scan the QR code while it lasts, because I'm going to go to the next slide in a sec. Oh, there it goes. Sorry, I hope you got it. We're going to be opening up the applications June 15th, so make sure to get it in before August 15th for the six paid positions for the Fall Crew. We're excited to also announce, nope, back, back. We're also excited to announce that we have additional tracks coming in, so hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have a specialty track in addition to the one I shared about today. For those that want to go into the HVAC and solar field, we'll have a crew that's specifically just for that, another paid crew. And the cool thing, the part I like, is that whenever people graduate, there's some that are like ready to go. Obviously, like, some, some already have jobs lined out a month before graduation. Others, they graduate and they're like, I wish I could apply again, can I apply again? And they just need more time. This allows us more time offering these, I call them 201 tracks, so they could do four, four months in this fundamentals track, but then they could apply for these. That way, they could stay in the nest or stay in the program for up to a year, even a year and a half. That goes towards, if they want to get a contractor's license, all of those hours add up. And for folks that are motivated for that, it'd be great for the Build Program to continue to offer programs like this. But if there's any other needs in the industries here, that a hands-on apprenticeship-based learning model could be of use, Build Program wants to be able to facilitate that and help in any way possible. Okay, now, next slide, Sam, thank you. Okay, now the numbers, I don't know if you could do it full screen, because the numbers are kind of small. So the total revenue of our ARPA Lake County grant is, originally it was $800,000, and then now it is $1,065,000, thanks to the $265,000 extension that went through at the end of last year. And this gives you a look at how we've spent the money since 2022. These numbers were in combination with another smaller grant that we had called Breaking Barriers. So some of these line items look like they're much larger than they are, because we use this grant to pay for things that the other grant couldn't. And so if you'll see personnel costs, operating program supplies, so program supplies, $50,000, that'd be for the, all of the materials from the jobs that you saw that we put in, paying for things like the door, paying for lumber for decks and et cetera. We have spent $790,000, so just about at that original $800,000 mark. So we're excited to be able to use the extension, the $265,000, for the remainder of this year. Okay, next slide. Here's our contact information. Encourage you to get in contact with us, phone, email, or on the website. Thank you. Really appreciate the opportunity.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah. Do you want to talk about the next round of funding? Do we, are we, can we talk about that yet?
Well, some of them we can't. I know at one point, we had up to eight different grants that we were applying through.
Okay. So I won't put you on that spot then.
Yeah, I'd love to dive into it, but yes.
And so maybe we'll get an update on that soon. This, just for the, our new colleagues, this, when, when the, when the county received the American Rescue Plan Act funding, we had this opportunity to invest $800,000, and then, because that money all had to be spent down by the end of 2024, there was some extra, so that's how we have this spring cohort going. It's the only way that we had this spring cohort funding. So this investment has fundamentally changed the lives of people in our community who needed the most, and it was not a handout, it was a hand up. And these two guys, if you come to the graduations, which I encourage you all to come to the graduations, you will cry, but you will hear the stories of, of how they've been coached with life lessons and tough talk, hard conversations. You don't let these folks get away with anything, right? You hold them accountable, Mr. Mike, you do. And that's what they need to change their lives, get their lives on a new path, provide for their families. And I can't believe one of them's buying a home now, that is incredible news. So we are continuing to look for funding so that we can keep this program going, because it's not just these folks that are in the program that their lives are being changed, but we're always hearing the stories of the people that need work on their houses. You know, we heard last year about the woman who was, her house had a fire in it, and she got back in her house for Christmas, and she had no other way to fix her home. So it's, it's hitting our community on so many different fronts. So thanks for coming again, and I really look forward to the graduation. I hope that you can send the invitation to all of us so that we can come. It should be coming up next month? Is it in May sometime?
Yeah, it's going to be either May 21st or 22nd. Have to confirm that, and then we'll send the invite to you.
Yeah. So incredible success story. I appreciate all that you do for these folks, because you will do whatever it takes to get them across the finish line. It's a small group, but that, that small group has a big impact on our community. So thank you so much for everything that you do, and thanks for coming again for this presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. Supervisor Spatier?
So, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate the work that you do, and yes, those graduations are outstanding. And in fact, the reason I want to say something is because of something that Mr. Mike told me during graduation, I think he got in trouble for saying something to me, but you said that's, that's your MO. If there's a way, if we're not already planning to do it, and I think it was a good idea, so I want to share to see if it's possible as we progress into our plan for developing housing in Lake County, to try to embed, or at least offer, to embed the idea of being open with, working with the Build Program. They seem to be finding ways to work with many of the projects that are happening here, but to try and embed it in there to make it an easy, open relationship so that they don't have to break through any kind of barriers. I know, for example, at the courthouse, there seemed to have been some barriers, you got connected, but not necessarily possible, but for other projects, if we can make it easier, we're already kind of helping to fund this program, we're seeing the successes of this program. If we can embed them in some of the contracts that are agreements that we make for future development, I think making sure that they have access to those developments to make it as simple as possible, and we gain and benefit from all the experience that they're providing to all these young men and women. I just, if it's something that's doable, love to see it happen.
Thank you.
Not forgotten the comment that you made.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I think this is, I know when we had this presentation last year, I was just really impressed with it. I think the thoughts back to when I first got on, having issues with people having the opportunity to build in general, no pun intended about the name of the group, but, you know, people were taking priority, or contractors were taking priority in Sonoma at the time, because, you know, I remember that being an issue, so folks weren't able to hire here. Now you're training folks and getting them in this program who are embedded in the community, which will, you know, encourage more likely them to stay here and work, you know? If they do go off, that's fine, but at the same time, they come from here, you've helped build that program, and that's just, I think this is going to help with that to continue forward. So I'm excited to find out about the funding coming forward, I know how that goes, so. But yeah, just thank you again for the work you do with these folks. Anyone else from the board, anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? All right, well, thank you again for the presentation, keep up the good work.
And I do want to have you back when you have the new tracks defined.
Yes.
That we can talk about what those programs look like, because that's important.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, as soon as we get that go-ahead, we'd love to give you another presentation. Well, Mike tell a couple more stories.
Those are good stories, by the way. They really help, you know? So I appreciate hearing that, you know, that direct connection, you know, the, the actual empirical knowledge that everyone's going through, and there's more to just training on building houses, is, you know, teaching them about life, you know? So, thanks again.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the investment, and thank you for the opportunity to share.
All right. CEO, five minutes?
Please.
We will take five more minutes here for a break. We're coming up on our 6.7 following that, so. All right. Yeah, thank you. All right, looks like we'll try to come back from our break here.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Right. And then also convincing them, MOU, our contracts too. If we're signing agreeing, we need our confidentiality clause.
Oh wait, it's, we're still, well, we're trying to come back is all we're trying to do.
Okay.
All right, we just need one more. We're almost ready. Oh, we are live, okay. So I will go ahead and move forward. We're going to go ahead and cover this non-timed item briefly. Consideration of an additional $15,000 transfer in lump sum from general fund to public guardian account for BB to Bravo, Bravo, to be used by public guardian for monthly patch payments not to exceed $5,000 per month for his placement at Nazareth Classic Care, a private pay facility that does not accept Medi-Cal or Medicare. And we have Director Dolman Parsons here from Social Services.
Rachel Dolman, Social Services Director. Online, we also, are we not, am I just not close enough? Online, we also have Amy Schumetsky. She is our Deputy Director at Adult Services. So, as brought to your board previously, BB has been released from Lake County Jail. He is conserved and it is not safe for him to be in the public, not for himself or for the public. He, we've had a difficult time finding a placement for him due to the nature of his conviction. We were able to find a placement for him in private pay for $5,000 a month. And the public guardian doesn't receive any state or federal funding for its operations. He doesn't have sufficient income from social security to pay for his stay. And we have been working very diligently to try and find a placement that accepts Medi-Cal for him. A majority of the facilities require we call weekly to find out if they have a bed. He is currently on a waitlist in one facility that maintains a waitlist. Amy, is he, what's his number?
Currently, he's number seven.
Okay, so he's moved up a little bit. And do you have any other comments with regard to our attempts to find him a placement?
Just what you mentioned, they do call weekly. Most, most facilities are not maintaining waitlists anymore due to the statewide shortage of beds. And so we call as often as we can. Some of them have let us know things that are going on. It is extremely difficult with him due to his status because of the fact that there are certain places that are off the list if they are close to a school or close to other facilities, such as a school. And they also need to disclose to the other residents the status before he can move in in some instances. And we've just been having a difficult time.
But we are hopeful to place him within the next three months. We are, have a larger list of facilities we're now reaching out to. And so this is why we've brought it before your board today to request an additional three months of payments.
Vice Chair Rasmussen, do you have a question?
Yeah, the question, do we get any reimbursement back from his social security income?
What's the status of that, Amy?
We do not at this time. We've been attempting to get his social security back to us. And he is also a veteran, that we've been working on that. And there is a potential Medi-Cal reimbursement portion that we are also in, that we've also filed for.
Okay, so anything that we recover could go back to the general fund for what we're paying?
Yes, it would be used to repay for his placement. It's not likely it would be enough to cover the entire amount.
Right.
But it would be better than nothing.
Yeah, that's why I was asking. So, thank you.
Yes.
Just a quick question. You said he was a veteran. You're applying for benefits or already has, he already has benefits?
He, he, his status with the veterans is complicated according to them. We've applied for, we are his, his power of attorney, I guess you'd call it in that respect as well. They are speaking with us. It's just they, he doesn't qualify for a placement within a veterans facility or some of those other things. So we're, we're doing what we can to receive and get notification on what benefits he does qualify for.
Right. Yeah, and I don't remember exactly, but from what I understand, if you have a specific, you know, felony or whatnot and whatnot, you wouldn't be capable of receiving benefits, but then there may be some. That's why I asked.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're trying every avenue we can with, with this gentleman.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you. I'm struggling with this one. I don't like any of the options that we have. But in our conversation that we had, I guess I'm seeking clarification. Right now, he is conserved by Lake County. And my knowledge of conservatorship is it is ordered by a judge. If we don't support him in a residential area currently, we lose the conservatorship? Or are we still forced to conserve because we can't just deny or go against what a judge says, right?
Well, if we stop paying for the placement, he is still conserved by us. And if he is released, we become liable for anything he does as our conservatee. So that's.
Or, or anything that happens to him. We, he, he cannot be removed from conservatorship unless he is returned to competency. And this gentleman is starting to struggle with advanced dementia. It's, it's heading down a medical route at this point. So we do not foresee him becoming restored to competency. So he will remain conserved. And conservaties in the public are, it's riskier for them, it's riskier for the public. It's, you know, because we are responsible for his life.
Yeah, I think that the whole thing that's not good is the history that comes along with it, that creates the difficulties in finding placement. I know in the memo that was submitted for this item today, it speaks that his health is doing better, but it sounds like he still has other long-term health impacts that still make it a need or priority to be in a residential place. I just, I, I think of all the people that we serve in our communities, and I can think of many others to serve with that amount of money who have not committed certain things against community members or made it more difficult in our community. I, I would like to find another way outside of general fund. And today, I'm going to be voting no to continue doing what we've been doing. I haven't seen the change and it's unfortunate.
Yeah. His, the mention of his stabilizing medically is getting him on the appropriate medications to address his problems, which he is unlikely to continue to do if he is not in the facility. Amy, do you have more comments?
That's just that. He was unable to be placed on any of medications that he needed while in the jail related to mental health and the dementia. He needed to be stabilized with the doctor. He has other things that were issues such as hearing issues that were creating vertigo and other things that were making it impossible for him to stay on his meds. And so when we say stabilized, he's been brought to a stable condition, but only because he's in the care facility.
Okay.
Go ahead Supervisor Owen.
Yeah, I'm curious about long-term solutions at $5,000 a month.
It's a lot.
It's a lot. And are there any other solutions for these type of situations for us in the state? Or are there any outside of the state that we could look at that may, may be a better option?
The best option is to get him into a facility that accepts Medi-Cal, and that's our plan. But the facilities do have the right to say, no, we don't want to take him. And there's also a shortage of beds. We can't place him out of state because he's conserved in the state of California. Amy, do you have more?
That, I.
That's exactly it.
Oh, what I, what I meant was, is there, out of state, is there a program that may, we may be able to use within California, is what I'm saying. Are there other options if we don't have something within state that we can look at bringing in that may be more advantageous and, and help in these type of situations long-term?
Yeah, like a supported living type place. Amy can speak to that a little bit more.
Fortunately, the majority of the, well, all of the supported living facilities that we are aware of are primarily, in our region and available to our clients are set for regional center clients, people with developmental disabilities. We do not currently have supported living that, that he qualifies for. In this instance, this is why we really, the shortage of beds is statewide, and I would venture to say other states as well. This is a long-term problem, and more and more people are being conserved due to regulations and not enough placements. So trying to, there are other counties with, with 290 registrations as well. So it is an issue. We are grateful that the facilities that we commonly deal with are continuing to look for us and continuing to be willing if they were to have a bed. So I, I unfortunately don't have any other solutions recently, but we, our staff is working all the time to try and find something else that he may qualify for. We've reached out in a lot of things and we've had a lot of no's, but they, they continue to look.
Vice Chair, I think you had your.
Well, I was just going to make the last comment. I, I know and appreciate that your staff is working hard every week on this to try to get him into a Medicare facility. I don't like having to, you know, keep bringing the general fund money out, but you are working hard to look at avenues for getting us reimbursement from those as well as trying to get him transferred to Medi-Cal. And it's a public safety issue, so we're just in a situation where we have to, we can't release him. I mean, we've, we've got to, to do that, otherwise we could have some serious liability if something happens down the road. So.
Right.
I thank you for the work you're, you're doing and I'll support, you know, support that we'll pay this for the public safety reasons.
Thank you.
All right, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this? On Zoom? Bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve an additional $15,000 transfer in a lump sum from the general fund to the public guardian account for BB to be used by public guardian for monthly patch payments not to exceed $5,000 per month for his placement at Nazareth Classic Care, a private pay facility that does not accept Medi-Cal or Medicare.
Second.
I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to our 6.7. Public hearing, consideration of resolution-making findings necessary to authorize an energy services contract for design, installation, and commissioning of energy conservation facilities serving multiple county facilities. And B, consideration of agreement with Enterlogics Networks Incorporated for design, installation, and commissioning of energy conservation facilities serving multiple county facilities. We have Director Lars Ewing from Public Services here.
All right. Good morning, Lars Ewing, Public Services. Appreciate the opportunity to present this item. The county librarian, Christopher Veach, a couple of years ago, in collaboration with Public Services and I'm certainly administrative office, secured a state grant, California State Library's Building Forward Grant for facility improvements at, at every county library, which includes the, the three county-owned libraries as well as Upper Lake. A part of that grant, in fact, really the, the bulk of it financially, that I worked with, with Christopher to scope out, is solar panels and, and battery backup at the, the three county-owned buildings. So Lakeport Library, Red Bud Library, and Clear Lake, as well as Middletown. So that's, that's what we're, we're considering. There's two parts to this project, and I'll go into, into some level of detail about it. But the first part is, is a resolution approving the, well, approving the project in a sense, but also the second part is, is an agreement for, for design and construction. So this is a little bit unique from, from other projects. And, and the reason for that is, is that it's an energy conservation project. Most projects, construction projects that your board considers go through what's, what's typically called a design bid build project where, or process wherein the, the project is, is designed by an architect or an engineer and then put out to bid for a, another party to, to bid on low bid and, and we come to your board for, for award. Energy conservation projects are, they are allowed to, to follow a different route. And that route is essentially, if, if the project is deemed to be financially viable, your board can, can enter into a contract at whatever terms essentially you deem, you deem appropriate. And so that's, that's the route we've followed here. What we're talking about is Government Code Section 4217. And so the, the resolution that, that is up for your consideration presents the findings there. Last year, what we, what Public Services did is we put out a request for proposals to, to design, install, and commission the, the facilities at the, at the libraries. Enterlogics was, was selected by a selection committee or ranked by the selection committee as the most qualified firm. The county evaluated their proposal, along with primarily through our, a, an energy consultant, Optini, they evaluated their, their financial analysis. The financial analysis is included in the packet, and they identified that the project is financially viable. So it has across the board, I believe it's a 10-year payback period. So, so that, that process establishes the fact that the, the project is financially viable. The second part is the agreement with, with Enterlogics. I'll, I'll just kind of summarize what they're presenting. Each project, each facility is obviously a separate facility. The first project at Red Bud is a carport array, a 31 kilowatt carport array. Lakeport is a carport array as well at 24 kilowatts. And the Middletown is a, a combination of a carport and, and a rooftop array at 72 kilowatts. The reason for the, the differences there, we, we started with the hope of doing, of doing carports. It preserves the roof a bit, especially at Lakeport and at Red Bud, which are comp shingle roofs, which presents a, a challenge long-term when we're putting up solar panels. The, at Middletown, it has a standing seam metal roof which allows for a clamp style of, of a solar panel. So it's not, it's not an intrusive solar panel installation. But we are also including a portion of the project is, is carport. So there is a bit of a dual benefit there. It also includes battery energy storage systems or a BESS, B-E-S-S system. It's, it's sized at a two-hour peak, a two-hour demand at, at peak energy demand. So in fact, I failed to mention that in the audience, I have Joe Cooper, Public Services Capital Project Manager. He can, he's available to answer any questions that might go into more details. But, but the battery energy storage system was, was included in the grant application. It is required. We had hoped to have more, you know, a little bit more backup power. Finances being what they are in the grant, we were able to provide a, a two-hour battery backup. But it does allow for, for us to expand in the future. Lastly, I wanted to touch on EV charging or electric vehicle charging stations. That is not included in the grant, but it is included in the overall project that we're pursuing through separate funds. So it's, it's not in the, the, the contract with Enterlogics, but it is something that we're, we're pursuing as a, as a part of the overall project. So at this point, the recommendation is to approve the resolution as well as the agreement and happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, wondering if you can maybe give us a brief summary. Part of the resolution is to approve that there is a good reason to get the solar panels because of the financial benefits. I have a grid in front of me with total energy financial benefits, which I'm taking, that's an annual amount that we would be saving in comparison to buying the electricity since it shows what the cost of it is per kilowatt hours, the projected value, and the total energy financial benefit probably matches that. Then there's the cumulative cash flow. It, some of it is a little bit beyond me, but if you can just summarize it, just since we're supposed to approve that resolution, I'm seeing the benefits, but I'd like. I'm seeing the benefits, but I'd like to.
Absolutely. Yeah, so so the the resolution references, I can't recall what exactly it calls it, but it's the financial analysis, and there's a spreadsheet that is included there. This is a combination of of all three facilities. And there's the the highlight is really, I'll just look at the at the right column. This is a over 20, a 25-year period, which is essentially the the anticipated life of the of the system. What they're analyzing here is will will the project save money? That's really what this spreadsheet is is intended to present. And so when we look at the at the bottom right, it has a net present value of 1.6 million, and it also has a payback period of 10 years. So if you if you start up in the top right and you and you go down, it's it's a cumulative cash flow. And so you'll see at at year 10 is when we transition from from a a loss to a gain, so to speak. So the over the life of the of the project, it's it's anticipated to to save 1.6 million dollars.
And so the beginning of it, it will be the first 10 years will not show savings, but in the long run of the 25 years, it will show a saving, is what I'm understanding.
Yes, based on based on the project cost of 1.2 million dollars, which keep in mind is 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 grant funded. So if we were paying this out of pocket, we would be handing over 1.2 million dollars for the project. And at year 10 is when we would break even and in theory. Now, there's there's assumptions built in here. It's PG&E's rates. It builds in a 3% escalation. It builds in, I believe, a half a percent per year degradation of the system. So there there are assumptions that that the county, sorry, I'm not used to glasses here. I'm I'm blind, and I couldn't remember why. So so it builds in those assumptions, but I I hope that somewhat answers your question.
It does. It does, and I appreciate you summarizing summarizing that for us. And obviously, since it's grant funding, the benefits already start from there, so.
Right. Yeah, and I didn't go into much detail on the grant. It I just really appreciate Christopher Veitch for for identifying the grant and and working. I'll say I worked with him. He didn't work with me. He's he did the the bulk of the work. And and it, you know, it's a it's a huge benefit to the to the county, the county facilities, my team and his team as well. So it's a it's a great chance.
Any other questions?
No, I'd like to say I'd like to have you tell Christopher thank you for us.
I.
That's amazing.
I notified him last night about the the item I intended to earlier, but he said he might be able to join, but but he did have a meeting, so so yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
All right, there's no other questions. Open it up to the public for comments on this. We're just speaking of A right now, right?
Well, I presented A and B. Happy to happy to go into the agreement, but yes, they are two separate items.
Okay. So Lloyd, am I okay to open for both, or should I just do one at a time when it comes to A and B?
Your board may open for both.
Okay, so if there's no one commenting on A or B, anyone on Zoom? All right, I'll bring you back to the board for action.
Offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
All right, Supervisor Owen.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Rasmussen.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska. And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye. All right, and.
Now, I'll I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with Interlogics Networks Incorporated for design, installation, and commissioning of energy conservation facilities serving serving multiple county facilities and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 500. Thank you, Lars.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our 6.8. Consideration of a presentation by Sonoma Clean Power. And B, consideration of direction to staff to request Sonoma Clean Power undertake an updated study on the feasibility of Lake County joining the community choice aggregator. And we have Matthew Rothstein and Benjamin Rickelman here along with, I'll let you introduce yourselves, sir. Sorry.
Good morning, Supervisors. Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. As you may be aware, in 2015, the county adopted ordinance number 3026 authorizing implementation of community choice aggregation, or CCA, in Lake County. And in the time since, joining a community choice aggregator has been periodically explored. In 2019 and 2020, at the county's request, Sonoma Clean Power conducted a feasibility study and found their expected rates at that time would have been about 5 to 8% higher than PG&E for Lake County residents. As a result, you can appreciate no offer of service was extended. But Sonoma Clean Power's board did commit to monitoring California Public Utilities Commission rulings and market conditions for potential opportunities to extend service to Lake County. Recent changes, including shift of responsibility for the Diablo Canyon nuclear facilities costs from PG&E's portfolio to all three California investor-owned utilities, have created an environment wherein Lake County's power charge indifference adjustment, which is an exit fee to make sure that remaining investor-owned utilities customers are not unduly burdened, would be very probably substantially lower than in 2020. While Sonoma Clean Power cannot promise cost savings, overall rates may therefore be lower for Lake County residents in the near to medium term. Therefore, this item invites your board to consider a direction to staff to request that Sonoma Clean Power update their feasibility study. And for your awareness, the cities of Lakeport and Clear Lake have both already communicated their interest in an updated study. You will be aware that Sonoma Clean Power has a suite of consumer-facing programs, customer-facing programs, and they are likewise leading efforts to expand development of enhanced geothermal systems in Sonoma and Mendocino Counties to meet statewide renewable energy goals. Later in this presentation, our economic development-focused Deputy County Administrative Officer Ben Rickelman will speak to geothermal-related considerations. And next, I'd like to introduce Jeff Cyfers, Chief Executive Officer from Sonoma Clean Power.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. Thank you for inviting me here, and and I'm joined by a couple of team members here, Miles and Ryan. If there's anything really technical, I can ask them, phone a friend. I'm here to talk about those twin ideas, so local power production and the expansion of geothermal, and also of some of the benefits that service from Sonoma Clean Power could extend into Lake County if if this board was interested. And I wanted to bring up that you already have really good partnerships, I know, with Calpine and NCPA for geothermal. And so this is an additive process to that potentially, if if the board's interested. And some of the benefits that I think we could help bring are allowing the residents and businesses of Lake County to actually use the power that's produced here. That's something that's currently not really available to you. And also really helping steer California's development of new geothermal in ways that benefits your community and not just at the whim of regulators and state agencies. And the third thing is really adding to the services that PG&E provides. So I'll talk a little bit about our agency, but one of the things I'm really proud of is we have good customer service, and we offer good incentives, and sometimes that even means getting PG&E on the phone with us to help explain how PG&E works. So let me back up and go or go to the first slide, please. Do I control it? Just hit. Arrow. Okay, thanks. So I want to just mention briefly what Cal, Community Choice is. And so Community Choice, or sometimes CCA for Community Choice Aggregation, is really about having local agencies, so cities and counties, come together and buy the power that their customers need and in terms of generation, and then effectively rent the power lines from PG&E to deliver it to customers. And so PG&E remains absolutely critical in this process. They still own all the poles, all the wires, all the substations. This is really just the power sources. And so it really came about, if if any of you remember, the Enron crisis and the energy crisis and Gray Davis losing his job and all of that, the lights going out. In 2000, there was a really serious crisis that cost our state upwards of $60 billion. And because of the market manipulation that was happening at the time, there was an interest in having more public oversight of power markets. And so the legislation was passed way back then, and it took some time to really get started. But the map of California there shows the green areas have active service or near-term planned service for CCAs in California. Again, public agencies, not-for-profit, owned by our customers. So the idea behind this is really to bring some benefits back to the community as best we can. We've been operating our CCA since 2014 and expanded to Mendocino in 2017. And as Matthew mentioned, took a look at Lake County a while back. Things do look better now, so I want to get into that. So let's see. So Sonoma Clean Power has been serving for a little over 10 years. We have a board of directors that consists of the cities and the two county representatives from the supervisors that we serve in Sonoma and Mendocino. And what's very unusual about CCAs is that our customers can leave. And that is very unusual for a public agency. It means we have to compete to keep our customers. So we have successfully managed to serve 87% of all the homes and businesses in our territory, so we have a good track record. But 13% of the folks decided they wanted their service from PG&E alone. And so that option keeps us on our toes, and it means that we don't always act like a typical water or municipal power agency. We have to be out in public way more often to keep customer interest. Our power sources today are our basic default service called Clean Start. It's hydro, wind, geothermal from this region. The next biggest one is called KISO System Power, which is mostly natural gas. And then we also have some biomass and some solar and a little tiny bit of nuclear power. And the optional service is called Evergreen, and that is a premium service that is mostly geothermal and solar, and it's all produced inside our service territory. So today, it's all energy that is made in Mendocino and Sonoma County. And that premium costs an average household between 15 and $30 a month extra cost. So this is for people who have the money to support that kind of effort. And it is a pretty small fraction of our population, but it's a very proud group. They're they're out there in front all the time. The the kinds of community support that we add to PG&E, so again, like if service from a CCA were in Lake County, you would still have access to all of PG&E's programs. But what we would want to do is add to that. And so these are examples. We have facilities and call centers that help customers with high power bills. That is the most popular thing we do, is do counseling on, you know, how do you trim your power bill? I was impressed by the item you just had about trimming your power bill, so congrats to your team on that. We also are responsive to conditions that come about. So in 2015, we made a small donation to after the the valley fire here in Lake County. And admittedly, it was only $5,000. We'd only been serving for 12 months and and didn't have any money yet. But in 2019, following our 2018, following our Tubbs Fire just a few years later, we were able to raise a million dollars for relief efforts and be out in the communities quite a bit. We also got PG&E and the local air board to kick in 15 million to help folks rebuild their homes following the fires. One of the most important parts of that was actually providing one-on-one support to people who'd lost their homes and helping them walk through their insurance claims and how to design and rebuild and work with contractors and all those basic things. A lot of school programs, our workforce development effort is is a really core piece of who we are. And so we work with both unions, with junior colleges, with trade schools, and really try to build, starting in elementary school all the way through, to have in-classroom programs as well. So the history of our competitiveness on price is a good one, but it is not perfect. And so I want to be really candid that what when we talk about cost savings with Sonoma Clean Power, it's that disclaimer in the upper right, I'm glad it's not obscured, is that we cannot promise cost savings. Our history, if you look at all the months of our service, is we've been cheaper 80% of the time, a little more than 80%. And I'm proud of that track record. But the things that make it impossible to promise that forever is PG&E can do things that affect the fees on our customers that we don't control. Regulators can change regulations and drive up costs, and the energy market itself can fluctuate. And so we absolutely are here to try to save money, and we very often do. And so we've certainly saved customers historically in total much over $100 million so far collectively, so we're really proud of that. But that disclaimer is an important one. So any consideration of service from us would have to understand that that this track record is is what it is, and we're going to keep making efforts to to be as strong as we can. In the in the last year and currently, we have the best savings we've ever had. So 7% doesn't sound like a lot, but in order to have 7% savings on the total electric bill, we have to give $50 million back to our customers in one year just to produce 7% savings. That's how much money is is involved in in energy. So it's a very, it's hard to squeeze $50 million out of out of the system. But we've been able to do it last year, and I think we'll be able to continue doing it through this year. It's hard to make forecasts much more than a year in advance, so so I want to make sure that's that's understood. This slide is just in here to show you that we're doing everything we can to not make the bills more complicated. The bills are way too complicated as they are. The two highlighted lines in the middle there show that we we partner with PG&E to have one bill. Nobody wants to pay for delivery costs separate from generation costs. They want to pay one bill for power. And so what we show is that PG&E is charging for delivery and Sonoma Clean Power is charging for generation. And then our call center can walk people through how on the following two pages, you can see how much money you saved by being with Sonoma Clean Power as well. So people can understand the value proposition of that. Just a quick highlight, a couple of these. So when we talk about our incentives and offers for customers, sometimes we use the term programs. What we're really trying to do is help customers navigate high bills and also get access to technology that they might not be able to afford. We're currently rolling out a thermostat program where we install thermostats in low-income households for free, and that helps customers shift when their air conditioner is running in particular, so that they're using less electricity during the peak time period, so they're saving money by doing that. We also have a savings box that we can send out to customers on request or or check out from a library. And in it, you can take out and use and keep the the light bulbs, the weather stripping. There's a manual on how to lower your energy costs. There's a smart plug, things like that. There's a lot more to this, but we can get into it as as there's interest. And then I think what's really exciting to me is that several years ago, our team, and I want to thank Ryan, Tracy in particular, really put our finger on the fact that the technology of geothermal is going through a new renaissance worldwide. The ability now to build geothermal affordably in today's market is expanding really rapidly. And and a lot of that know-how came out of oil and gas. How do you drill a well affordably? That's that's what the oil and gas industry figured out. And so as a result, California has already ordered 2,000 megawatts. So I think what's on the hill today, 750, 750 megawatts or so of production right now between NCPA and Calpine. So this would about triple that that amount. And and that's that's already under an order from the state. What we really want to do is help steer that to go in the places we want it to be and in with the right kind of community engagement that is needed to to get it right, to make sure it's low water, we don't have a whole lot more water, and to make sure that we're attending to all the things that could go wrong but don't need to, like handling seismic safety and air quality and all the rest. If you haven't heard about it, I want to talk about one of the technologies. But maybe right before I do, the partnership that we've formed is currently between the counties of Sonoma and Mendocino and Sonoma Clean Power. And that is the structure we currently have to do that kind of steering work for new geothermal in the region. And we've targeted 600 megawatts for Sonoma and Mendocino County across those two counties over the next one to two decades of development. And 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 we've been working in our communities to educate the community about why that is valuable. For for anybody who hasn't thought about kind of the state's climate goals, one of the problems with them is that we haven't been building the resources that actually allow those goals to be finished. We've done the the first set of technologies, solar and wind and batteries. We've done a lot of that. You can't ever really shut down a nuclear plant or a gas plant until you have a resource that runs at winter and through the night. And geothermal is one of those key resources. So we we have this opportunity zone we've set up, and this is really to be more attractive. So, we have this opportunity zone we've set up, and this is really to be more attractive for grant funding, and this is something where, it's one of the few things that I think Trump and Biden agreed on, which is geothermal is a good technology. And so, I'm actually excited about working with this administration. The industry partners that we work with, we are working with their know-how about how to drill and operate, and we're working with them to steer those projects to the right kinds of places, near power lines and with the least amount of impacts. So, if we wanted to work together and the board wanted us to study the feasibility of expanding service to Lake County, I just wanted to offer up this timeline. This is really kind of roughly the earliest service that we could provide, and it's driven by state rules. And so, the early summer of 2027 is about what we're talking about, to give us time to have a conversation. Nobody should rush this. We don't want to rush it, but we need to understand what the feasibility is, what the costs are, what the value is. If the feasibility study is requested, and we go back and do that and bring it back with the results, that would be a time to have a really detailed conversation about what are the risks, what are the benefits, all that in detail. Today is really just a snapshot, I think. And in order to hit a service date in 2027, we'd need to file an official plan with the California Public Utilities Commission by the very beginning, January 1 of 2026. So that's our deadline for that work. And I think, I'll do this one and then turn it over to Ben. Okay. So briefly, what's, one of the exciting evolutions in newer geothermal technology is that we no longer have to be in an area with exactly the conditions of the Geysers facility today. So what the Geysers has is sort of magical. It has volcanic rock that's fractured and has pathways for water to move through. It has historic water underground. It has a recharge facility, and it has hot rock near the surface. So it has all those conditions that make it this sort of magical place. What we're finding with EGS is the ability to drill two vertical wells, one that injects and one that collects, and then underground to crack the rock between those two wells and create the fracture network. So we're looking for really dry, hot rock without the water, without the fractures, and it allows us to keep the water in the system. So it actually allows us to recirculate the water over and over again. And that is very exciting because everyone's told us we don't have a lot of spare water. So, EGS is getting proven up right now in Utah, and there's a facility that's getting up and operating there that's substantial. It's 400 megawatts. And what drives me nuts is they're selling all of that Utah energy to California, to Southern California, and Utah's not benefiting from the energy, but they're definitely benefiting from the dollars and the jobs and the taxes. And one of the things that's keeping us from doing that here is California's permitting process. It basically requires us to go through the CEQA review twice for geothermal, once to explore and then once to develop. And so, we do have a bill in Sacramento this year to try to change it to look more like the rest of the nation, so that we streamline the expiration phase and make sure that that process is efficient and quick, so that the developers will want to come back to California. Right now, they're mostly looking at Nevada, Colorado, and Utah. They're not really interested in California today. So we got to change that, and I will turn it over to Ben. Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you, Jeff.
Excellent. If I could.
Turn this over to you.
Appreciate it. Oh. Okay, yeah, let me just. Let's go back. There we go. Just going one direction now.
There's the little things on the left bottom, like little arrows. There.
Oh, okay. I'm good now, but thank you. Ben Rickelman, Deputy County Administrative Officer. So I was going to build on what Jeff was saying about the commercialization of new geothermal technologies and then the potential economic development benefit for Lake County. This is the Utah project Jeff was mentioning. This is Cape Station in western Utah by Fervo Energy. They just announced today it's actually 500 megawatts. They have a permit up to 2 gigawatts. So, for each of those pads, there's multiple wells, so a lot of the activity is below the surface. It's, they're drilling about 8,000 feet down vertically. Fervo is a really interesting story and kind of a proof of concept. The first, I would say, broad-scale new generation geothermal project in the United States. They've raised about 800 million, about 600 million in the last year. So there's been a lot of work with the federal government and several geothermal companies to commercialize the technology, and we're just getting at the point now where it's at major scale. And as Jeff mentioned, they have a 320-megawatt PPA agreement with Southern California Edison. So this is a picture that just came out. This is also Fervo's Cape Station project. This is kind of the central hub, so work on the turbines and then the processing. This is in Bavaria, Germany. So this is one of the two companies Sonoma Clean Power has a cooperative agreement with the geozone. So this company is known as EVER. They're a Canadian company. They're using a different geothermal technology. It's called a closed loop, so they drill down around 18,000 square feet, and it's a series of connected loops. It generates both electric and thermal energy. I guess the question of commercialization with this is it's substantially funded through European Union grant funding and some state-backed loans. So, I think it's kind of wait and see if it can reach the commercial potential. This is from a report from the Department of Energy, and I put this in the presentation just to kind of show where we are in the process of iterative improvement. So there was, there's a lot of tech transfer from the oil and gas industry, but generally, these new geothermal technologies, you're drilling farther down, so it's harder rock, higher temperature, higher pressure. So, the industries had to make these process improvements, these technology improvements, and now we're kind of getting to the point, and Fervo's the industry leader of harnessing these technologies and process improvements for large production. So Jeff touched on this, and I was just going to go into a little more detail. So, industry term for geothermal is firm power. It's 24/7, unlike solar and wind. And so, when utilities putting together a generation portfolio, they have to think how to balance the intermittent power of solar or wind. And so, geothermal, being carbon-free but also being 24/7, it has a market premium. There's been purchase price agreements where it's been $20 to $30 more per megawatt than solar, so it's a key piece of the puzzle. The first graph is just demonstrating with the different utility regions, with solar and wind, there's only so much replacement rate with natural gas because it isn't firm power. And then, the second one is showing, energy demand in the country was fairly flat for a while, and then around the last 10 to 15 years, it's taken off again. A lot of that's driven by data centers, AI, but also just the overall electrification of the economy. So there's demand out there, and there's also a need for firm, carbon-free power. So, geothermal, even though the upfront cost might be more than solar and wind and long-duration batteries, it is, could be a key component. This is another factor when thinking through Lake County. So we do have certain challenges Jeff was talking about with the permitting structure here in California. But one thing on the positive to take into consideration is it's currently very difficult to build transmission in the country, which basically these two graphs demonstrate, and transmission development is basically not quite halted, but very slow. So there is existing transmission capacity at the Geysers. Roughly, less than half is being used at the moment. So if there was further geothermal development, there would be that where the power, that wouldn't be a key roadblock. That's also important to take in consideration with, there's considerable geothermal development in Nevada and Utah, and there's some transmission capacity to get that to California, which is how that purchase agreement happened with Southern California Edison, but the transmission capacity is rather limited. So Jeff was talking about at the state level with permitting, there's also federal permitting, which is quite extensive. It has to go through NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act. Currently, it takes about seven years for a geothermal project. As mentioned, there is bipartisan support. This is one of the few energy sources where there is at the moment. So there could be a change of the structure that would reduce the timeframe to four to seven years. And I think this is just important to keep in mind with any potential substantial geothermal development in Lake County, it would take a while. There would be potential exploratory activities and drilling shorter in that timeframe, but for full-scale development and connection to the grid, with just taking into consideration the federal permitting process, that could be seven years. And then, through an economic development lens, I think there's a few different factors to consider. One is it's a very capex-intensive industry. There's a lot of capital expenditure, which would be fairly unique for Lake County and just in general in rural areas. Fervo was estimating to just drill one well, it takes about $4 million, and one well, they're getting about 10 megawatts, so they're drilling lots and lots of wells, several under each pad. It's a lot of steel, it's a lot of high-end machinery. And then also with that, which we do see with the Geysers too, there's a fair amount of sales tax just with replacement. So with all these different parts and operating under high pressure, there's a substantial recurring revenue for the tax base. Somewhat unique with geothermal, and it's also true with oil and gas, is both the temporary and permanent jobs are high wages, so almost all on the six figures. You need specialized drilling experience to work on these, and then there's substantially more construction drilling positions than permanent, but they all pay well. That's all we have for our presentation, but open for questions or comments.
Roger Piska.
Yeah, Jeff, and Miles and Ryan, thanks for coming today. You know, I think we are all aware that our constituents are being crushed right now with their utility bills, so I'm happy that we're having this conversation. We owe it to our constituents to have this conversation and to look for pathways that can reduce that burden that they're feeling, especially our small businesses. We had several just absolutely fold during the summer last year, and their utility bills were the main cause. So I think, you know, it would be, we need to look for other alternatives. What is the process if we gave direction today? What does that look like for the feasibility analysis, going to your board and then coming back to us?
I'll share through staff the stepwise process, so you can have that in writing. But generally speaking, we would go back, after receiving a request for feasibility, we would go back and take probably two to three months, probably closer to three, to study and really analyze the numbers and develop an opinion, and bring that to our board to get confirmation that they're interested and that they would like to extend an offer. And that can take at least one cycle of board meetings, maybe two. And then, this board would, in parallel, would be getting a briefing on the results and considering whether or not you want to explore this. And ultimately, there would be an ordinance that would be passed if that's the right way to go and joining is the right thing. And once that ordinance is signed, then we go through the process of updating our regulatory documents, so it's called an implementation plan, and file that with the PUC. That's what triggers a one-year minimum clock for us to go out and buy resources for these new customers, and we have to do that in advance. And so that's why we're looking at more like May of 2017 for service. So, that's the rough calendar. It could take longer if this body or our board needed longer, or if we, for whatever reason, needed more time. It's a little harder to squeeze that into a shorter timeline because of the regulatory delay process.
Okay. And then contingencies. So, would both the cities need to also join to make this feasible?
Yes. Well, not to make it feasible. So, I failed to mention, I apologize, that the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport did request feasibility analysis, so that, those letters have already been received, and we have begun that work. This can work with just one jurisdiction out of those three coming in. It makes more sense, it's much simpler to communicate with the public if all three came together or didn't come together, because it can lead to a lot of confusion if Lakeport's in but Clear Lake's out and so forth. So, if it all aligns, my hope is that it's all yes or all no, because it does mean we can go out and get on the radio and get in the local papers and have community events, and nobody will be confused. So that's my hope, but that's just, that's just staff's hope. That's not a political answer.
Okay. And then, is there any financial benefit for all three jurisdictions joining?
The scale helps, and so, having, so the cost of feasibility to Lake County is nothing. We do that on our dime. If Lake County wanted, ultimately joins, then what we have the option to do is delay providing cash incentives to customers for like an optional program for some period of time to recoup the cost of that study. In the past, our board waived that for Mendocino, so you could request waiving that as well. It's not a big number. So from that standpoint, that's a no-cost risk to the county. The advantage of some scale is there, and really, the efficiency of rolling out at one time is the big deal, because we'll be sending folks from our team up here to work with you all and your constituents, and being able to hold, you know, 40 events that reach everyone as opposed to 40 events one year and 40 events the next year and so forth. So, it's more about efficiency of the process. It's not a big doll, it won't change rates. So that's maybe the bottom-line answer.
Okay. And then, Ben, you talked a little bit about the benefits of geothermal in our community. I've always been in favor of expanding geothermal capacity in our county. Is this going to be contingent on the geozones?
No, these decisions may, can be made independently. I think the, it's logical to me- it, it's logical to me that Lake County being in the geozone, for example, would have, and we've heard in our, our previous conversations, would have some connection to being able to use the power that's being produced. And so if, if you agree with that, the simplest way that I see is staff service from Sonoma Clean Power. But these are two separate decisions that can be made independently. And so, um, having service from Sonoma Clean Power doesn't require you to be in the geozone. You have a lot of potential here, I think, for new geothermal and, and the transmission that was mentioned. And so I think from an economic development standpoint, that would be pretty valuable. But again, that can be made independently.
Okay, good, thank you.
I was just gonna quickly add with the county and the geozone. So the county would, if it was to join the geozone, it wouldn't be giving up any regulatory power. You can think of the geozone as community engagement and business development. Any geothermal project would still go through community development and the permitting process here. And then, um, so the geothermal setback around Clear Lake, which prohibits geothermal development in that area, would still be in place and that, this wouldn't alter that in any manner.
Supervisor Owen?
Well, I'm pretty excited about this, to be honest. Um, I think that the competition is healthy. I think it, it's always healthy. I had spoke with, uh, Miles and Ryan about possibly, you guys are looking to drill and put in your, your, some news stations. And I had requested and asked if you guys, if you would be willing to drill in Lake County and to put some of your stations in this area for our tax benefits, so that we have more revenue. And I know at this moment, by far, the biggest percentage of the people that work at the geysers do reside here in Lake County. By far, I think in NZPA, something like 40 employees and only, um, 39 of them live in Lake County. And I can't remember, it's really high in the, um, Calpine as well. So I think the, the new jobs that you'll be bringing will be huge. The subcontractors that also work up there, that'll help with that as well. So this is, um, pretty exciting. I think I'm, uh, looking for, uh, maybe building in this area.
We're very open to it and absolutely want to take your lead. So we don't want to be the outsiders who come in and tell you what to do. So with that, um, interest, I would love to expand on that.
Vice Chair and then Supervisor.
I just want to sorry, clarify, so if we, we did eventually join, our board would have, end up getting a seat on that board. And then most likely the, the two cities here would switch back and forth on a second seat or?
That's what, that's what happened in Mendocino County. And that would be my expectation of where, where my board would likely extend an offer, um, if all three entities came in, yes.
Okay. Well, most of the, the rest of my questions have already been asked and answered. I'm definitely in favor of, um, doing a study to find out if, you know, it's beneficial for our customers here in Lake County.
Supervisor Sabate and Supervisor Owen, you can go again after.
Yeah, appreciate the, uh, presentation. Obviously, you wouldn't be here if you didn't think the feasibility study would prove positive for you. So I think that's going to be an easy, um, action to take. Uh, and I, I, I want to know what it says specifically, the devil's always in the details. Just, uh, uh, two separate parts. One is, um, the expansion of SCP being available to PG&E customers here. What kind of job creation would that create in Lake County for customers? You mentioned you have great customer service. What would be the opportunities here to have people in Lake County available? You said something about, uh, visiting your home and, and providing boxes of, uh, ways to reduce your energy bill, things like that. What would that look like?
Yeah, we, we would need to invent that. But what I'm imagining would be most effective would be to have probably one or two full-time folks who are here in this region, who are, um, available to help with all the basic kind of questions that customers have and help out in, in those ways. And then for the more complicated situations where businesses have refrigeration units that are on the fritz or things like that, we have a team of engineers and folks back in our Santa Rosa office who can be dispatched or who can, um, answer a lot of questions by phone. And, and the boxes you mentioned actually get mailed out. It's kind of a DIY kit. When it comes to homes, it is actually very difficult to staff going from home to home and make it count. We've tried that in the past and it's, it's extremely expensive. And so what we try to do is come up with better and better ways to teach people how to, um, do, do something themselves or provide a cash incentive of hiring a contractor to help them out. So, so those are kind of the two channels we usually have for, for homes. And, um, and so the biggest jobs benefit is from energy production. It's not, from, customer service is going to be a pretty small, um, opportunity for, for, um, for job generation here. The, the biggest one is going to be, I, I just was hearing about solar and batteries and EV charging stations. The geothermal would be the, the big game, but short of that, other forms of energy production, like building more solar and batteries that we could purchase so that on your, on your owned land, so the county owns some land. We may want to set up a contract where we're paying you for production of power on your land. And then that can feed back into serving your own customers, but all of your customers as opposed to just the county. So that's a way of, of creating revenue, um, from your owned assets as well.
And so you mentioned that you'd have that year to kind of, uh, increase your capacity for increased customers in Lake County. Would you be specifically looking into Lake County as far as where that would be generated? Or would you be looking everywhere throughout your district and your region?
Everywhere in, in the three counties, if county's in, i- i- if Lake County is in, we'd, we'd still be looking in Sonoma and Mendocino, we're not going to walk away from that. But we absolutely would be looking in Lake County too. And that's where this body has, um, a lot of value to us, um, if we're, if we're doing energy projects here, in advising us, um, what we always do, if we're looking in a reg, if we're looking in Mendocino and we're looking east of Ukiah, I know the supervisor I'm going to call and say, what do you think? Before we ever spend a dime, like, is that viable? Is it, is it going to work? Do you know the landowner, all that kind of stuff? Same kind of process would happen here in Lake County, where we'd, we'd have a conference first with the people who represent that district and then kind of build outward from there to prove the viability. And that's something we're doing all the time. We're, we're currently finishing a project up in Mendocino County. It's a four-megawatt, um, solar array with some batteries. That's the biggest one we've done in Mendocino that's solar, but we're always looking for more opportunities. And, and so that's an ongoing project.
And my last comment is about, uh, the geothermal. I'm open to, uh, possibilities, but I'm also cautious to some of those possibilities. What I see is, yes, they do offer good jobs, but no, they have not changed the complete profile of Lake County and the struggles that we have in our financial status. What I see is raw resources leaving the county to be utilized by others. I want to make sure we benefit from the generation of electricity here. I want to make, because the end product of the, um, what's the, the term I'm looking for? The up, the uplifting of the next product that's made. The manufacturing, uh, the end results of the economy are much different in impacting our community and the economic development than the raw resource that is created from just going into the ground and, and creating things. So I'm hoping that we look not just at the generation of electricity, but how that's going to benefit the industries we have here currently. The residences that we have here currently, what kind of deals we can look at. And those are all for much later, uh, situations. But I, I want to make sure that if we're going to, I mean, we saw the pictures. There is nothing surrounding any of these, um, facilities that are being built in Germany or Utah, right? Because you don't build communities around those types of facilities. You create something and then you sell it away from where it's created. Uh, I want to make sure it impacts us in a very positive way, so we can build a different economy than what we have currently to really uplift our communities out of the unfortunate poverty that we're still surrounded by in Lake County. So hopefully those are things that we'll keep an eye on as we, uh, look at that, obviously the impact to our environment as well. But it is a much cleaner, uh, generation of electricity than some of the past things that we've seen. And, uh, I'm interested in seeing what the possibilities are. So thank you for being here and I, yes, for the feasibility study.
Supervisor Owen, you had your pen up.
Yes, I did. I have one more question now. As I understood it when this was presented at Calpine, it will go into the ground, it'll be kind of a closed system, circulate through, get heated up by the core, come back up and be, is there any loss of, of water during that process?
There can be. And so it is not a perfect closed loop, um, but it is, um, substantially lower water use than the traditional, uh, technology that we, we built.
That we're using now, yes.
And, and, and I got to give Calpine huge credit for getting more out of what they already have. They've been doing just stellar work up there. So what is, what's new about this is it can go in places that are away from that region. So that's one key thing. And so we can look at different types of land that, that's, um, maybe more impacted land or maybe closer to transmission or other kind of features. And it also has that ability to recirculate substantially most of the water as opposed to a, a smaller fraction. And so the amount of recharge it would need is, is going to depend on the specific rock and, and we won't know that in advance, um, at least far in advance. But, um, we can learn a lot during the exploration phase. And we'll know, uh, much more then about what the risks are of, of needing more water in that.
The, um, Utah, what is their water lossage?
Fervo's recapture rate for the water is about 85 to 90%.
Perfect, awesome, thank you.
Right, thank you. A lot of the questions I had, thank you for your statement as well. Supervisor Sabate about, uh, you know, what the re, return on investment basically is, that's one of the biggest things. I know that we had talked before, I think Jeff, over in Clear Lake Oaks with some folks at the, uh, Nylander office. And, um, Ben, thank you for mentioning the geothermal setbacks, because that's very important to me. I noticed, um, in, in discussing this and not only before, but like in some articles, there were statements made about how Lake County has like three-quarters of the land area. Just want to make sure that's not including the geothermal, you know, setbacks, you know? That's, that's very important. Also, uh, just another quick question. The, the board, it's comprised of members from which, which counties? And, and I know that it said, but I just want to get them all.
So there's one supervisor, um, John Hasek from Mendocino and one supervisor Linda Hopkins from Sonoma. And then each of the cities, um, have a representative on the board. In Mendocino, the three small cities actually share a board seat, and so they rotate that. And in Sonoma, where we started, all the cities have, have a seat. And so that, that, so it's an 11-member board today.
So Sonoma has how many seats total?
Nine.
Okay. And then we would be sharing, if, if this potentially goes into an agreement or whatever the case may be, we would have one seat as the county and then a shared seat as Lakeport and Clear Lake.
That's my understanding of where, where it would likely land. The, the thing that, um, Ben Rockman mentioned that's important is you wouldn't be giving up any of your current jurisdiction, um, by, by serving, you know, minority on the board. What, what your minority numbers relative to Sonoma would, would impact is new policies that that agency's making or new direction it's making. But you wouldn't be surrendering any Lake County sovereignty, um, or, or rights to, to, um, control the, the permitting process for anything that goes on here. So I want to be clear about that, that, the law doesn't even allow that. So, um, so that's, I hope that helps.
That does. Supervisor Sabate, you had your pen up.
And that actually leads me to something I forgot to ask about, um, and you just mentioned sovereignty. You're talking to the cities, you're talking to the county, but everybody on tribal is also accessing electricity on tribal land. What's that interaction look like? And are you interacting with the tribal councils in order to get support for this or not? What, what, what's that look like?
We are. And, and really, we're beginning, um, even further back with most of the tribal, um, engagement that we've had over the last year. Because some of the tribes need more urgent help with some existing problem. Like, um, one group had quote-unquote free solar installed on all the homes. And no one explained how the TRUP worked, um, on their solar bill. And so they were going through the year thinking they were spending $20 a month. And everyone got air conditioning and then they got $3,000 TRUPs at the end of the year. We're helping tribes unwind those kind of situations and try to figure out how to fix them and get value out of what they already have. And so we bring up the geozone, we talk about it. But, um, so far in our first year of really serious engagement, we've found we need to really focus on, um, the immediate needs, uh, first and then build from there. So we have made a long-term commitment, um, and in Sonoma and Mendocino counties, we've completed our, our first round of processes with, um, four of the tribal, uh, groups, including the Round Valley, um, multiple tribes. But we're in it for the long run. So if you've got advice on that, um, knowing Lake County has tribes as well, um, we're all ears.
And just to clarify, this SCP access and the electricity you're already receiving, where again, you showed us a bill where you get both of those, you need approval from the county and the cities to come in and provide that. That, my question is, where does tribal fit into that request? Is it completely separate? We can't come together all, all in, in one, um, letter together saying, here's everybody that supports doing this?
So you're asking a really important question that California and the federal government have not given us a legal answer to that. And, and I think because California and the tribes are co-equals, it, it points me to the federal government to try and figure out how to answer that question. We've asked it and I have not get, gotten an answer yet of how that sovereignty must be respected in the, in the decision-making. So what we're doing, because we don't have a legal answer and because apparently no other, um, CCA in the United States has gotten an answer, is we're just conferring with the tribes instead, um, just trying to explain how things are working and see if they have concerns. So we're using the consult process instead of a legal decision, because I don't know how to make one yet.
But they would still have access to the service?
Yes.
Okay.
Just one additional thought on that. Sonoma Clean Power has recently stood up a capital projects group. And so there might be potential partnerships with some of the Lake County tribes. I know a few of them are pursuing microgrids. So that could be something to explore.
All right, uh, we'll open it up to the public if there's anyone that would like to make a comment.
Members of the board, my name is Denise Rushing. I am a citizen of Upper Lake. And I served on the Board of Supervisors for eight years, uh, ending in 2015, just before the first CCA I had was brought to the board. My background prior to that was in the energy industry. So after I left the board, I also, uh, rejoined the energy industry before I retired. I ran the California Clean Energy Fund for a time. And I want to say two things. First, uh, the community choice aggregation structure. These entities have proven themselves, um, over that, this last decade. And when the board took this up last time and, and passed the ordinance that we would consider it, I think, uh, it was Supervisor Farrington had brought a proposal to the board and it was run by a private entity. It was the only proposal of its kind in the state. I actually got up and spoke against it at the time because I didn't feel it had been proven. And, uh, it looked like it had a lot of risk to Lake County. I want to say that this, uh, this community choice aggregation proposal, I mean, it's a no-brainer to get the feasibility study. Once you have the feasibility study, assuming that it shows that it's feasible, I would say that, um, there, there are many things going for CCAs that have emerged over that period of time. One of them, of course, uh, is that it's less expensive. PG&E at the, at the time, a decade ago, put in some, uh, exit fees that made the feasibility study, there was a window where it worked. They put those fees in and it didn't work to join, so that it was really hard for CCAs to add new customers. Now we have that window open again, at least for a time, and once you're in, you're in. So it's, um, I think it's, it's an opportunity. Second is that as, uh, when I was in the California Clean Energy Fund, looking at innovation across the state of California, and actually around the world, I worked for a company called New Energy Nexus, a nonprofit that serves, that fosters clean energy worldwide. New Energy Nexus, a nonprofit that serves, that fosters clean energy worldwide. Some of the greatest innovations in the state of California are coming from these community choice aggregators. Their innovations in customer service, their innovations in customer programs. They are leading how to get clean energy to the underserved and those who cannot afford it. They're leading in some of the key electrification efforts that need to happen. And there are some benefits, I think, to Sonoma Clean Power, obviously. One of them might be support for the geozones, but also, I don't think most people know that Lake County sits, because we sit between the Central Valley and the coast, we're either in one or the other solar zone when it comes to climate zones for analysis. And if you analyze solar for Lake County alone, the projects are almost always better than the analysis will show, because we have clearer skies usually, unless there's a fire year. We have clearer skies, we have better solar radiation, we have lower temperatures, which actually help the panels a bit. So we're in a great position to see some energy development here that's not just geothermal. The tribes may take advantage of that, the microgrids and some of the clean energy. But I think that most of those solar projects will look better than the analysis will show. So I think there's some benefits to having generation. And finally, I just want to say, wouldn't it be great to have Lake County residents benefit from the energy that's generated here? At one point in the past, I calculated that we were a net energy generator. We generate more energy in Lake County than our citizens use, and wouldn't it be nice if we could benefit from that? So I stand in support of you approving the feasibility study, and of course, there'll be more conversation after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. And I just want to state, out of respect for her service to the Board of Supervisors for her eight years, I allowed her to go over her time, so. Any other comments from the public? All right. Any on Zoom? All right. I'll bring it back to the board, and I think it looks like we were just looking for direction. It looks like we have a consensus of that direction. And appreciate the presentation, appreciate the work, Matthew and Benjamin. Jeff, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we are at 12:07 with one item left, right? Except for closed session, of course. You know?
Good day.
So with that, we'll go to our calendars. Who wants to start first?
I'll go ahead.
All right.
Looks like tomorrow I have a COC Shelter meeting. I may crash the Lake EDC meeting just to kind of check in and see what they're working on. I have a NACO Arts Council meeting, and then later on, a meeting with Congressman Thompson. Thursday, starting off at Judge's Breakfast, we're hearing all about Woodland Community College this month, and so I forget who the specific individual was, but it was John Hamner last time. He does wastewater and water classes. Most of the people that work for special districts have gone through that class. Not an easy class, but a great addition to that college in creating the workforce development that we need for that. Moving on, I have a IFT meeting, and a COC Performance Review meeting, a Food Policy Council meeting, and a COC Strategic Planning meeting, and finishing off that day with a city council meeting over in the city of Clear Lake. On Friday, meeting with our Potter Valley Project team, and looking forward to that. And having a conversation with the City of Clear Lake and Public Services on Monday, a CAO meeting for our meeting on Tuesday, and I don't believe that the other meeting I have on Monday is going to happen, and we'll see if that can. But then back here on Tuesday.
All right.
I have some constituent meetings coming up this week. I have Caliomi Water on Thursday, and Rotary Club and Disaster Council on Friday, and I have some research coming up.
All right. Go ahead, Supervisor, or Vice Chair, either or.
I'll be in Kelseyville most of the day tomorrow. I've got a lot of meetings. Got an invitation from Chief Huggins. I have a constituent meeting, and then it looks like the Black Forest burn is going to start tomorrow, so I'll be over there. And then I'm going to go to the Chamber meeting with Congresswoman Thompson. Then I have the Risk Correction Authority Biomass Subcommittee, another constituent meeting in the evening. And Thursday, a home hardening tour, which I've invited Vice Chair Rasmussen to join. There is a best-fits grant meeting. I don't think I'll make that, but I do have my NACO Resilient Communities meeting at noon. Hopefully I can get back to that one. And then we have a two-hour Coal Creek site visit for the flooding, which again, Vice Chair is going to join me. Colbergere Council's in the evening Friday. I will be at the Sunrise Rotary Disaster Council, Coal Creek Advisory Collaborative Meeting, and then LIDAR Derivatives Discussion. So full day Friday, and then Monday, I have my meeting with CAO, and then we've got Risk Correction Authority. But I don't know, I don't remember where this time, do you?
Yeah, I think I do. I wanted to make sure, because last-
It's not on the invite, but I guess we'll have to, we have time to figure that out.
You go to the wrong spot each time.
I know you do.
Well, yeah, it's not on my-
We'll get that figured out. Okay.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Last week, I had Lakeport Fire Department meeting. I covered for Supervisor Pyska at the APC and LTA meetings last week. I held office hours with Luca from Congressman Thompson's office in Lakeport. Last week, we had 26 folks come, and pretty much they stayed the whole time, and all the questions were really related about the federal budget and how it could affect Lake COC Committee meeting earlier in the week with Supervisor Sabatier, or late last week, I'm sorry. We had the BVAC meeting late last week as well. I attended the Crime Victims' Rights Barbecue over at Victim Witness. Had our monthly Mental Health Advisory Board meeting at the Circle of Native Minds. I had a community council meeting with the city. I attended and spoke at the Children's Advocacy Festival in Lakeport. Thank you Supervisor Sabatier was also there. I went to an Operation Tango Mike Welcome Home event for a veteran of our military here in Lake County. I had a meeting with the Chamber yesterday, Lake County Chamber on mutual goals. Week six of the HITCH survey was this week, yesterday. I'll have Lakeport City Council meeting tonight. I'll be attending Chamber Business and Mixer events this week. Supervisor Pyska mentioned the Coal Creek, which I'm going to be joining. I'll plan to attend the Operation Tango Mike Packing Party late this week. I'm going to be on KPFC on Friday morning, and various other community meetings throughout the rest of this week, and I believe that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting tomorrow, I think you mentioned it Supervisor Sabatier, with Congressman Thompson. And then West Region Town Hall. Then I have a meeting here at the Chambers with some constituents and the Treasurer-Tax Collector. Tango Mike is, I've been having conflicts, so I'm glad this time I should not have one. So I want to be there at the packing party with you there Supervisor Rasmussen. Friday, the Potter Valley Team meeting that we have. And then Monday, of course, the CAO meeting that we have weekly. I have a meeting also with some constituents from Clear Lake Oaks and Water Resources. Let's see, and then the Risk Reduction Authority meeting. Hopefully, I'm not like a butter bar lieutenant in the Army and I'm not lost again.
You'll get there.
Yeah, I'll get there. So with that, we'll be back here at the Board of Supervisors meeting on the 22nd, and I don't know if there's anything else, but I'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and read off the closed session items, and those are-
Chair, do you mind if I just make one quick comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know that Vice Chair Rasmussen mentioned that he spoke at the Child Abuse Awareness. I just want to give kudos. That was a great speech that you gave, and that was powerful, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Just wanted to highlight that.
That was a good one. Thanks. So in our closed session, we'll start out with the 8.1 Conference with Labor Negotiator A, Chief Negotiator Carlos Torres, County Negotiator Susan Parker, Stephen Carter, Casey Moreno, Pam Samick, and Diana Rico, and Employee Organizations LCEDA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSEA, and LCSMA. Closed Session Item 8.2 Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. 8.3 Public Employee Evaluation Behavioral Health Director. And then that would be the last one. So with that, we will go ahead and start our lunch break. It will come back at 1:20, 1:20? Sound good? 1:20? And we'll go into closed session at that time, and thank you for coming to the open session of our meeting.